I would like to call the regular Planning Commission meeting of November 9th to order at 6:06 PM. Will the clerk please take a roll?
Commissioner Seals?
Present.
Commissioner Sajel?
Present.
Commissioner Bushnell?
Present.
Commissioner Rubio?
Present.
All right. Commissioner Rubio, would you like to lead us remotely in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I would love to.
Thank you.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. All right, we're going to do the approval of the agenda. Does the commission have any adjustments to tonight's meeting agenda if the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as any new business at this time?
No.
All right, hearing no additions, the consent agenda will stand as presented. We'll move to reports, and we will start with the city deputy administrator. Left, right, the other one, yeah.
All right, I just want to thank everybody here for respecting that we are highly encouraging masks when you come into any of the city facilities during this time. I know inconvenient, so thank you guys for looking out for everyone. We've got about 2,600 total business license issued so far this year, so that's up quite a bit from last year. We've been out doing some ribbon cuttings for new businesses that have moved here to Wasilla, and some existing like Wazee, they had a new housing complex open, Perpetual Motion Automotive, they opened the 28th of October. We invite you all to the Taste of Wasilla, which is six local businesses that have put together a seven-course meal at the Menard Center this Saturday night from 6:00 to 8:00. And we have a City Wasilla app in the App Store now, so you can download that and stay up to date with forms that you might need, or recommendations on where to play, eat, sleep, and you can participate in different scavenger hunts that we have going on throughout the city. So, thanks.
Thank you. City Attorney, are you on the line?
They shouldn't, as far as I know, neither one of them are going to be attending.
Okay, all right, so no report from them. City Planner?
I don't have a report at this time, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have a report from the City Public Works Director? No, you don't want to talk to us tonight? All right, I'll remember that. All right, we're to the public participation portion of our hearing this evening. Anyone wishing to step forward to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, i.e. the landscaping ordinance, you may step forward at this point in time. You all have five minutes in which to talk. Please write your name on the sheet, and please state for the record whether or not you live in the city limits. All right, seeing that nobody wishes to step forward and participate in the public testimony portion of the open mic, at this point in time, we'll move on. I will need a motion to approve the consent agenda from the commission.
Commissioner Sajel, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a second.
Commissioner Seals, second.
All right, the consent agenda has been motioned to approve and then seconded. If there are no objections, hearing none, the motion stands, is approved as presented. There's no new business, so we're going to move on to unfinished business. This item was continued from the October 12, 2021, regular meeting, and is allowed for additional input. Mrs. Crawford, would you please reintroduce item 9.1?
Certainly. The item in front of the commission tonight is the public hearing to adopt a resolution making recommendations to the city council for changes to the landscaping regulations. The document that's in front of us is, I think, morphed a little bit from where we started. The initial direction was to identify possible relief for industrially zoned lots, that's how we started it, then it was, it kind of grew, there were a few suggestions. So, at this point, it's a little bit about a mini-modification. We've had numerous meetings, work sessions, starting in March 9 through August 10, there were work sessions, and then the public hearing last month, and that was continued to this to allow some additional input. In your package on page 15 is a strike-through and underline version that's in front of you tonight. What it has at October's meeting, there were some questions about what changed since the August version to the version that was in the packet for October. So, in your package, you'll see some of the underline and strike-through is highlighted in yellow and some is not. What's highlighted in yellow is actually the change between those two versions, and in your package, beginning on page 11, you have a comparative table that kind of explains what each of those differences are and why they changed. The bulk of them, or just for clarity, there were a couple that reduced, added some cost reductions, and one or two allowed some additional flexibility. But again, the bulk of the changes between the August version and the October had to do with those types of things. There were a couple significant changes, changes being a relative word. The biggest change, I would say, is in the violations section of the code. That's not so much a change as it actually is putting in writing the practice that the staff has for dealing with violations versus leaving it subjective for the city planner and the co-compliance officer to work those out each time.
Can I interject right there?
Sure.
So, this is, it's new, though.
It is new. That's why I said it's a change, but it doesn't necessarily impact what we were looking at as far as ways to provide flexibility in the code, to reduce costs for developments coming in.
Because currently, there is no mechanism for enforcement, other than no fine mechanism?
No, there is one. It's just not clearly identified as to what that is and how it works.
Okay.
So, for people to have clear understandings of, you know, actions have consequences, this actually codifies the consequences and how you would remediate that or deal with that. And again, it's pretty basic. It still has some flexibility and wiggle room in there to deal with variations. But, you know, it's that, it's always better for people to clearly understand what they're looking at if a violation were to occur, and what would be expected, at least in a general way, versus, yes, you're in violation, and you're going to have to fix it, period. I mean, fix it is very broad. So, it's adding that type of language and then assigning fees and identifying who can be issued a citation. That wasn't clearly vetted out. So, that's a newer change, for sure. Then there was another one dealing with when you are proposing to leave existing vegetation to meet a requirement in the code, whether it's screening and buffering, or whether it's just meeting your required landscaping. It includes a requirement to actually inventory what you have on that site, so that if it were cleared during construction, you have a clear understanding of what was taken down, and you can have a better tool to work with to identify what an appropriate mitigation plan is. What we have right now, are just looking at aerials, although the borough's got some really great aerials, they've been taking them on a regular basis. You're still looking at tree grounds, overall canopies, it's kind of hard to decide what size that tree was, how dense was it, or was it one big tree? So, this establishes that ahead of time, so that you're not trying to recreate that from adjoining lots after the fact. So, that's that chart. What you have as a handout tonight is a one-page, two-sided table, and there are copies in the back if anyone didn't get it. So, you also have an email that we received yesterday afternoon from the chapter, Alaska Chapter President of the American Society of Landscape Architects. That's a handout that you have, it's also in the back, too. There, it's my understanding, there's someone here, Peter Briggs, will be speaking for them and explain it more in detail. What I got out of it was they recommended that you didn't approve the resolution, that you set up a stakeholder group to look at it as a whole and come up with ideas and suggest it to the Planning Commission. So, in, upon receiving that and then that recommendation, what I did was create this chart to kind of help the Planning Commission and the public, I understand what the code that's in front of you actually does, and what I called it was basically, the majority of the changes are dealing with the three Cs, my three Cs, clarity, consistency, and cost, reducing cost to developers. There are a couple, again, as I went over, that may increase the cost. So, in that chart, everything that's in white, or that's not highlighted in yellow, reduces the cost, the overall landscaping cost to the developer. Everything in yellow is either new, or it has a potential to put a restriction that wasn't in place that may or may not have a cost. Okay, so, we can go through these however the commission wants to go with them. It is a public hearing, but that doesn't mean that there can't be, the commission can't propose changes. The commission, as you're aware, can adopt it as is, they can, you can make amendments to remove items, to add items, to amend items, or you can choose not to move forward and look at doing the stakeholder group. Two things I want to say about that, and then I'll leave it to the commission to direct how you want to go through with this. If we, there are significant cost savings incorporated in this document. If these changes aren't adopted now, they won't be in place for the spring plan review for development that's going to be proposed for 2022. They'll be held to the standards that are currently on the books. That deals with the mults, the number of flowers, the number of shrubs, 10-foot trees, all the things that have been brought up, as we need to amend those and reduce those, and this proposes that. That's certainly an option, but it would be my recommendation to, if the commission has concerns about some things and unintended consequences, to just remove those at this time and move the bulk of it forward to the council, so that it can adopt it and be in place for the next development season. To establish a stakeholder group, I spoke with the city clerk this afternoon, it requires the city council to approve that and to appoint members to it. So, the commission would need to schedule, to put a resolution on their agenda recommending that the council set up a stakeholder group and, you know, identify who you think should be members, and you report it to the city council, we will get it on their next available agenda, and then they would either agree or not.
Commissioner Bushnell here. So, that process, according to who you spoke to, we would name the...
You could recommend who you thought should sit on it.
Okay.
But it's just a recommendation. The code only allows the council to set up, whether you want to call them a work group, a stakeholder group, whatever, they are the only, they are the only ones that have authority to do that.
Could the, would they answer then to the commission, or would they answer then to the council?
Well, they don't necessarily, they're just advisory.
They're just advisory.
So, they would provide their recommendations to this commission.
Okay.
And then this commission would weigh them, consider them, choose to, you know, approve, recommend approval, or modify however, just like you do with any other ordinance change.
Okay.
And, so, I think that's it in a nutshell. I'm prepared and willing to go line item by line item to go over the changes. Again, you have those two comparison charts. The majority of the changes produce cost savings. Again, the bulk of them do not, it may be new language, but again, the purpose is for clarity and for clear understanding of what the expectations are and what the consequences are. Certainly, you can pull those out if you think they need additional work, but I would definitely recommend moving forward with the cost-saving changes that we've identified.
All right, excuse me. So, with the commission's approval, the other commissioners' approval, Mrs. Crawford and I spoke earlier about the letter that came in, and a little bit about what it would take to put a stakeholder committee together on this project, and I asked her to look into it to see what we could or could not do as a commission, because, sure, we'd love to do everything, but, you know, legally, there's, are some limitations. So, with that in mind, and kind of going to traditional speaking engagements here at the commission, what I would like, what I would propose if the other commissioners are in agreement, is to have Tina have you withhold, going line item by line item, at this point in time, and open it up to public comment, and then have you be able to come back and then address that, and if, and if there's any things that need to be addressed to the public comment, that we can go from there.
Sure.
Is the commission agreeable to that?
Yes. I'll agree to that.
Yes.
Commissioner Rubio?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And, City Planner, Mrs. Crawford, you're okay with that?
Oh, certainly.
Okay, all right, all right. Then, at this point in time, I am going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing that is now open for serial, excuse me, resolution serial number 21-14. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? You'll have five minutes to provide your comments. Please come forward, write your information on the sheet provided, and if you could let us know who you are and where you're from.
Good evening. My name is Peter Briggs, and I'm representing the Alaska Chapter of the American Society of Landscape Architects.
Good evening, Mr. Briggs.
Through the chair, apologies for the late delivery of the letter yesterday. It sometimes takes some time to move a letter through a board and get approval for it. You've already spoken well to what was the content of the letter. Within the letter, we recommend not adopting the code, because in general, we feel that there are some inconsistencies or weaknesses in it that could be improved. There are many improvements within it, but the letter outlines a number of items that we thought that a committee or as an advisory group would be able to speak to or provide guidance on. It's good information to hear that it's complex to set up a stakeholder, or, I'm using stakeholder now, advisory group. One of our questions would probably be, is there less of a formal ability to provide guidance or review to the commission? So, what are the requirements that make it a council-approved stakeholder group? That might be one of the questions that I would have. For any of the items within the changes, as I said, there are some that are obvious improvements. The key two items, the key three items, I think, that I see within this are the item number one, number two, and the last item, or the second-to-last item. We do feel that these, that the current code provides a significant economic burden. We've done some cost modeling to illustrate some typical costs for that, so that's something that we could share if desired. The second part of it is the atypical requirements for plants and the complexity of specifying different sizes of plant material. And then, one item we really...
Excuse me, sir, can you clarify that statement?
Now, I have to remember what I said. Availability of plant material for the sizes, so for...
The atypical aspect of it.
Within our local market, it's standardized, for example, to 18-inch shrubs. Any shrubs larger than that typically have a higher cost, or they're not as available. So, by specifying 24-inch or 30-inch shrubs or higher, it starts to limit the available species it might be available with, or that they're just not available in any given year. Between Anchorage and DOT, all of these large projects, they very quickly suck all of the plant material out of markets, making it pretty hard to get plant material. Most of the plant material comes out of the Lower 48 or from Canada. So, and those aren't excuses for not having larger plant material, but it's starting to get harder to find a bigger plant material with, especially during the pandemic with people focusing on doing projects, there's actually pretty hard to get material. And I know landscape contractors in the audience as well, and I think Ken can speak much better to availability, should that be of interest to the commission this evening. And then the last item that I really do want to emphasize is, code often has unintentional consequences on staffing, because staff are expected to do everything. So, one thing we would like to note is that whether it's permit approval, helping people with permits, or reviewing the guarantee, the landscape upon completion of the guarantee period, it's something that should be evaluated because of the code is significant, and sometimes unfair to expect one person to deal with a lot of this stuff. And there are other items that we have within our list that we thought an advisory group would be a good format to review, but I would defer to you folks for what questions you might have within those. And we would really like to try and figure out a faster system than perhaps having a council-approved group, because we do recognize that it would be great to have these improvements in place prior to next season. We recognize that there's the speed required for that. That would be the overall general statement that I would provide, if there are any questions.
Commissioners, with your approval, Commissioner Bushnell here. Normally, we do not question public testimony during an application. This is the second time we've spoken on this resolution, and probably the sixth time we've met, or at least five times that we've met, talking about it in general through the processes that we have here. I don't think the city attorney's on line to contradict me, so without any objection from the other commissioners, I would like to open up questions, allow questions from the commissioners, to the person testifying on behalf of the public. Any objections from the commissioners?
No.
Okay, hearing none, then if you have any questions, please ask them. Okay, I do have one question, and it was about the expediency, and I understand the aspect of getting a stakeholder group, and I also understand as a city, as a first-class city, we have certain rules that we have to abide by. It would be really nice to be able to put a, just a little non-sanctioned group together, but that's what we've done for the last six months. That's what we, commissioners, have done, to ask the public to come talk to us, to talk to us in person, and it's been really hard. We've, I think all of us have gotten a lot of anecdotal information, we haven't got a lot of facts. I do like the one suggestion that you have, and I've talked to the city planner about it, about putting a cost analysis, take a project, pick a one-acre parcel, pick a building, doesn't matter what it is, it could be a quonset hut, for all I care, but what does that project cost in our here versus in another jurisdiction, say Palmer, or say Kenai, or say Anchorage? I don't think going to Fairbanks is going to make, it's, I don't think that's irrelevant. It's, who are we competing against as a city from that standpoint? My other thought on it is that, having talked to the planner about this and looking at how much time we've put into this, I'm going to put you on the spot, since you're testifying, would it be your opinion that to move forward with what we have now, so that we don't hurt next year's building session, because there are lots of good things, they may not be enough, but at least they're moving in the right direction? Do what we have now, would it work? And then putting a planning commission, or putting a group together to try to fine-tune it and then really overhaul the whole, because this was just supposed to be a industrial review.
Yep.
Would that work, in your opinion?
So, two things to share with you. First of all, I think that the context within which we've been seeing this evolve over the past six months, it started off as industrial. I can speak personally that for two or three years, we've been waiting for a significant code rewrite, because I think the code could definitely be simplified and respond to economic concerns. But I think the point that you bring up is a really good one, is that even if the code was approved tonight as written, if there was a timeline for reviewing it again in order to have a major code rewrite, I think that could be satisfactory. But even within the code rewrite, there's more confusion that it's adding, due to some semantic clarifications could easily be made with a line-by-line review of things. But to answer your question, I think if there was the intent to have a major rewrite within the next six months, and to engage into that process to say, we've got to get it right now, but these are filling some holes that have been identified, I think that would be acceptable. But I do worry that this does add extra complexity and significant cost within the process. And my second point is, may I share a cost analysis with you?
Yes.
So, within Alaska, the jurisdictions that currently have code are Palmer, Fairbanks, Wasilla, and Anchorage. Palmer and Fairbanks, it's a pretty minimal code, really basic. Anchorage has a really robust, well-proven code, and it's not overly, it's not overly burdensome on people to do it. The Wasilla code is generally approximately twice as expensive to install as Anchorage. Rather than looking at a whole site, what I do is look at a 100-foot perimeter on a given project. Within Anchorage, we call it site perimeter, which is the equivalent of Wasilla's site perimeter. In Anchorage, the cost to do that is about $6,400. The city of Wasilla is $10,500, so just less than double.
Are these similar-sized sites?
No, this is just for 100-foot length.
Okay.
In order to, in order to zero out for other impacts on it.
Fair enough.
For parking perimeter, which includes the addition of a continuous three-foot hedge, that increases the price to $13,500. With the new code, it does have a slight reduction, which is mainly attributable to the reduction in perennials. So, for a site perimeter, it goes from $10,500 down to approximately $9,000. And then for parking perimeter, again, due to the perennials mostly, it goes from $13,500 down to $12,400. So, it's true, the code is bringing down the cost from a landscape material point, pretty much attributable to the perennials, but it adds complexity for the permitting of it, because now, when we're developing permit sets, we have to have symbols and call-outs for six-foot evergreen and eight-foot evergreen, 18-inch, 24-inch, and 30-inch shrubs. And then there are aspects of it as well, from a design perspective, that are still quite prescriptive, stating that perennial groupings have to be within, you know, can't be further apart than 15 feet. So, the unintentional consequences of the code still have significant extra costs, reduced on one part, but it increases them from a design cost perspective. And then the maintenance aspects to this still aren't necessarily optimized for maintenance, is when you have perennial beds spread out and all this landscape dotting through a whole site, you're maintaining your entire site instead of more discreet areas. So, my worry is unintentional consequences of cost.
Okay. Do any of the commissioners have any questions on that portion of the testimony? Commissioner Rubio?
I don't have any of that portion.
No questions.
Okay.
No question.
City Planner, you have a question or a comment?
It's just kind of a question, it's more of an informational question. So, you mentioned that the main cost is due to the reduction in the perennials. There's a few other nuances, like the trees going from 10 to 8 feet, was that calculated in that cost savings?
Um, so...
The street trees went from, well, they stayed the same, I guess, it's the, maybe that doesn't come into that.
For something like residential buffer, so I didn't look at that. So, there are areas where the movement from a 10-foot tree to an 8-foot tree will have a significant cost. With the pricing we have right now, and we're in a weird climate for pricing due to transportation issues, an 8-foot evergreen tree is approximately $1,600. Last summer, we saw a 10-foot evergreen tree was $1,500. So, even with an 8-foot tall tree, and we just got a, within town on a project, a 6-foot evergreen, which is Anchorage's standard, and is typically considered to be standard for a horticultural industry for installation for cities, 6-foot tree is approximately $900. So, there's a really big difference moving to the larger trees. Those prices go up and down depending on if there's big projects in the Lower 48, so they're a little bit variable, but even an 8- or a 10-foot tree is significantly more expensive.
Okay.
But yes, so that doesn't factor into these, because what I looked at was site perimeter, whereas the code has some special items that relates to buffer or where evergreen trees are required. This is based on 2-inch caliper deciduous trees.
Okay. And for the audience's information, one of the things that I've talked to off the record with the city planner is, the potential of putting together, having contractors... with the city planner is the potential of putting together, having contract somebody to put together a site plan for us with exactly this, that explains, that takes all of the code to a project. So we have, so we have a basically a study project. It has the interior lanes, it has the interior, the 15-foot, the 12-foot, the exterior aspects of it, and all the different items that would go into the aspect of landscaping code. Because as we look at it, we're like, okay, grass, trees, plants, we're not landscapers, we're not landscape architects, we're just citizens working within the city trying to make this work. And this is one of the things that I have brought forward is, as you know, I'm a real estate agent and a commercial real estate agent, and one of the things that I worry about for the city of Wasilla is out, the outward migration of our cash flows. And what that is, is when a business comes to Wasilla, they, everything that you spend at that business goes to some other community. The number-one business in a community is a community college, because the money spent at the community college go to increase the knowledge of the community. All the money, all the wages are spent within the community. Very little of that money actually leaves the community. I'm going to pick on fast food for a second, because the national fast-food chain typically dictates where their food comes from, where their source of food comes from, and most of it is flown in or comes in from outside sources. So only a little bit of the wages actually, the wages of the employees stay within the community, and the rest of it leaves. So in that regards, I would like to see a leveling of the field, if it can be legally done, of course, because we have, we have to play fair. But a big business can come in our community and do what we ask with no consequences, because they're just going to fleece the city of monies along the way, and we'll keep the tax dollars. But it won't necessarily be good for the community. And I think that's what we look at from the landscape. I personally look at from the landscaping is wanting to make sure that it's, it's level and fair, and fair only happens September, I know. But make sure that it's level for all parties, whether it be a mom and pop who comes to the market and wants to start a business and build a building versus a Fortune 500 company wanting to move into our community. And that's, that's what I'd like to see. And who we hear from is the mom and pops who can't afford it, not, not from the Fortune 500 companies.
And I think, speaking of a local perspective, is I think that an analysis of local capacity would be quite beneficial. There's Martin Martinez out in Palmer with Seed &amp; Tree, where he has a fair amount of local species, but he's often purchased out partly through the season because of the demand is so high. It would be great, I would, it would be a great business idea for someone to really come up with a good nursery for us up here, because most of our material comes from outside. So that's a plug for anyone who is looking for a good business.
Okay.
And speaking to an analysis of a site is that for the site plan, I can speak, I'm also the owner of Corvus Design, landscape architect who provide permitting sets. With the packages that we put together, we develop a pretty detailed code table, and it's not necessarily that difficult to take that, and we generate a cost estimate in part for the guarantee requirement, to take that and apply it to the new code. And what I'd really like to stress with the, our request for a advisory group is that we want to bring people together with very focused and intense efforts to assist, because it's, it's bettering our community. So even for myself, if it was useful to provide a site plan that was before-code, after-code, it's pretty easy to do, so I'd be happy to generate that, you know, even within the next couple of days or week.
Commissioner Seals has a question.
Yeah. Did you do a cost separation? If the code is left the way it is for the '22 season versus the changes that are proposed, what, I'm trying to see if it's going to be a significant impact if we do nothing versus pass this.
I think that if you pass it for developers or the local community, it will reduce the prices somewhat. I think that it could be simplified more to help with the price even more. And I would draw that comparison that between the next market, Anchorage, that Wasilla's code is much more restrictive than the adjacent business market. And part of that as well is that it's, it'd be great to have a slideshow or something, but the boulder requirement and the decorative fencing requirements, those are also something which aren't in other typical jurisdictions. And it's not to say that those are not worth it or anything, but there are additional costs here that don't happen in other locations.
Commissioner Bushnell, I have a question here. Based on the numbers that you gave us for the exterior 100-foot, it appears that there's approximately, with the, within what we're proposing, approximately a 15% cost savings, at least on the exterior. Is that-
Yeah, I'd say-
Do you think that would be similar to going in interior-wise with the reduction in the tree size, et cetera?
So the, on the perimeter, 10% to 15% probably, and with the interior being reduced to the 18, keeping the nine perennials and then the 18-inch shrubs, 15% to 20% perhaps, so a little bit more savings.
Okay.
And then for the buffer landscape, where you're talking about the bigger evergreen trees, a little bit more significant, too.
Could potentially up to 20%, 25%?
Any of these, I think, guesstimating. I could get you real numbers pretty easy, between 10% and 20%.
Okay. All right, I think that helps. Do the commission members have any other questions before we move on to other public testimony?
Not at this time.
Mr. Briggs, do you have anything further?
No, I do not. Thank you for your time.
I do have one last question for you, and it came up early in the conversation. Within the letter from the landscape architect, I'm going to call it Guild.
That works.
One of the recommendations was, or part of the committee that they requested that we put together was architectural, or excuse me, landscape architects, an architect, builders, a property owner who had been through the process, a developer who had been through the process, multipliers, and a civil engineer. Question, why a civil engineer?
Within the packet that we put together, it includes drainage plans or similar. We can prepare that and show some of it on our sheet, but within the set, you only get a good site design if you have a full team. Civil engineers are critical, and especially bringing them into this process to help them understand the process better, because there's a fair amount of, I think some of the challenges that Tina and we bump into is that people are still new to this process. So a benefit of the advisor group would be to create a couple champions in the community as well that could say, we worked on this and we helped to develop this. So it's really that casting a wider net to pull people in and take accountability.
Buy into participation?
Yes.
Okay. Participate or shut up?
Yes. And I would like to apologize is that the expansion beyond the industrial aspect caught us a little bit by, we weren't expecting that so much. So our lack of timeliness for interacting with this is something that we wish would have been different. So we were hoping that there's a way to, to make good, to, you know, be productive.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to step forward and testify on this topic? I see one, two, three, four, five, six. I see six people willing to testify. All right, then I'm going to close the public testimony portion. You need to come forward and sign in? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. That's fine.
So I'm Ken, Ken's Garden Center, Lawn Tech. So I can speak a little bit about, like, availability of plants. We try to buy our plants from nurseries that have the same climate as us, and even when it's not COVID going on, we have difficulty finding plants. You know, so we buy a lot from Bronson, they're around the border of Montana, they're in B.C., and now they, we're not first priority at all. I mean, we buy a lot of stuff. Alaska buys a lot of stuff from them, but it's, availability is really bad for us up here, you know, so. The difference between an 18-inch plant and a 24-inch plant comes from the same batch of plants, same field of plants. They sell off container size versus height. I can call and say, hey, Sean, can you send us, we need some 24-inch plants to meet requirement. He'll say, Ken, you know, we don't go by that container size, but I'll go measure. You know, we might get half of what we need. Trees, same thing, you know, we need 2-inch caliber trees, we might get one and three, one and three-quarter inch.
I'm going to stop you right there. So when you say container size, I think I understand what you mean by container size, because I love to garden. So you're talking about an 18-inch- Commissioner Bushnell?
Can he finish his five minutes and then you have your questions?
No, I have a question right now. We did questions on the other person, too.
Right, but you asked the commission after he gave his statement.
Okay. So does the commission have any questions or any heartburn with me asking questions during the testimony?
I'd like to let him finish.
I know, but I have a clarification.
What?
Go ahead.
When you refer to container size, you're referring to a 6-inch container, the size of the container that the root is in?
More of a, you know, three-gallon, four-gallon, five-gallon, seven-and-a-half, 15-gallon.
Okay.
And then we move into a bigger size, you know, 30-inch plant, that could be, some species will get 30-inch, a lot don't, and so the price goes up because of care at the nursery before they send it up. We want 30-inch plants, that means it's been in that nursery a few more years, more watering, more fertilization, more trimming. It's more, it's more dirt we're shipping up, less plants. You know, shipping, shipping goes up for less plants, you know, and it's even hard to, you know, sometimes in contracts we have to write for the next year, depending on shipping, depending on prices going up, stuff like that, you know, and it, it's tough doing it in Alaska, you know. So my opinion, you know, it's easier to do a job. We do some high-end stuff in Anchorage. It's easier to work in Anchorage now than it is in Wasilla, and you can take that any way you want, you know, I know we're trying to better our city. But it's also more difficult to have, so we have cotonyaster, have 18-inch cotonyasters, 24-inch cotonyasters, 30-inch cotonyasters on the same job. It can get confusing, not that we try to do it right, but you know, you have landscapers running, running around doing this, and all of a sudden you got this, and goes, oh, man, this was supposed to be 18. Next thing you know, he's got shears out, sheared them down to 18, so well, you know, those were supposed to go out by the road. So that's a concern, and it's a valid concern. 30, I mean, like I said, I just briefly read over the new code today. You know, 30-inch plants, you know, it could be, you know, cotonyaster, we'd probably do that all day long, but spirea, potentella, evergreens, that'll, that'll be work to do that, so.
Fair enough.
And that's all I got. Any questions?
Any questions, commissioners?
So what would you recommend would be an appropriate plant size? Because you said the 30-inch you thought was too costly.
Well, it could be too costly. I mean, you're talking root size, too, so I think, you know, there's different requirements on the depth of the soil. So, you know, a 30-inch plant, we're putting in more soil now, too, you know, for the health of that plant. So, you know, there's a variety, I mean, cotonyasters, I like cotonyasters because a moose or a car drive through it, you trim them back, the next season, you're right back where you are. The columnarastmen's the same way, you know, a moose could damage those, you trim them up, the next season, they're headed back to where they are. You know, I was just reading a little bit about the shade trees and stuff, that, I think that's going to be difficult to get shade trees growing in the islands, so. It's just an opinion.
Why do you say that?
Because the length of our growing season, you know, to get, I mean, species, well, we could have to have shade trees. And cotonyas, I mean, columnarastmen are really proven, they're really wind resistant, they come back every year. I mean, they're, it's just a proven tree.
They're the kind of wispy, taller, slender trees?
Right, yeah, like even down in Idaho, you know, some of the farmers and ranchers use those for windbreaks, that's how tolerant they are to the winds. Did I answer your question?
Well, I was, what would be a size you would recommend if not 30-inch?
24.
24.
Yeah, and even 20, it's even hard getting 24-inch potentella installed in the ground, 24-inch. Not that they don't get that big, it's just the availability, you know, because we don't, Alaska doesn't buy as much as the rest, you know, the Northwest does, or even, you know, in Canada. And we, I mean, we ordered some big trees last year from a grower in Canada who supplies a lot of the municipalities around Canada. We had a huge order with him. He couldn't get them out of the ground and get them to us, you know, he just, because of the, you know, the certain situation, you know, with COVID and everything now, so.
So, right now, there's a lot of, Commissioner Bushnell here, there's a lot of supply chain problems. We know that. We hear about it every day on the news. I see it in every project that we get involved with. But throw that out the window, let's go back to regular day, because we can't, we can't write our code based on we're going to have COVID the rest of our lives, which we might, but we might not. But dealing with a regular, five-years-ago, supply chain.
Yeah.
You're going to have years that there's going to be other projects in other parts of the country, et cetera, hurricanes that take things out, et cetera. On a normal, average, three-to-five-year averaging, for what we're asking for, how difficult is it?
It's doable, but it's, it's more difficult than, say, Anchorage, per se, you know, cost-wise. And you know, I mentioned, just to get away from plants for a second, like fencing, we had to order some fence for a job this year, and it took a long time because we had to get it from down south. I don't know if we can, you know, move into what's available, readily available here, you know, so. Stuff like that's always going to come up.
Okay. So since you're a landscaper, I have, or you're actually a supplier, I have a, one more question, Commissioner Bushnell. And this came up in a conversation, and it, I don't think, and Tina, you can, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think anywhere in the code, and you know, I think, I know there, in a couple of places, we talk about the depth of soil, but it came up in a conversation with somebody else that part of our issue is not necessarily the size of our plants, it's the maintenance afterwards and how and which they are planted. And how, and therefore, we create, for what we're asking for, we're creating a situation that won't work over time. So I'd like your opinion on that, based on what we're, what you see.
So we're installers, too. And so I've seen a couple of jobs to meet code. So just back up a second, you know, so a lot of times, you know, an architect could go out and try to, for our micro, we have a lot of microclimates up here. Instead of designing those microclimates, sometime, this, in my opinion, they have to design to the code. So, I mean, we put an awful lot of perennials out in the jobs we do inside the city of Wasilla. Without the maintenance there, that's creating a problem. So, I don't know if I can use McDonald's as an example. I think we put 2,200 daylilies in McDonald's in Wasilla. That's going to be a maintenance nightmare in a couple more years, and that's a lot of hand-weeding, you know, so opposed to Eagle River McDonald's we did the next year, that came, it was, it was an easier job to do, and to me, it looked better, and I think that's because of the code. And the, and we do the maintenance in Was, in Eagle River, you know, but we don't do the one here in Wasilla. But it, all those daylilies are, they're going to be a problem in a couple of years, in my opinion. Another thing, we planted trees underneath power lines, you know. You know, MDA called me up, or, you know, said, hey, Ken, you can't plant those trees there, all right? I got an approved plan. You know, what you guys do after the job is your business, you know, so. That was it.
I've heard that from the old tree trimmer for them. I've heard that same story. Trees got planted, trees got cut. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Seals.
So you'd mentioned earlier that a lot of times you have to bid your jobs for the next season for availability. So you've bid quite a few jobs for the next season, and is this, is this change in the code going to affect you for stuff you've already bid?
So, it could. I mean, I have a lot of my own stock, you know, so it could. And a lot of times, we'll have, we'll have contractors call us up, say, this is, this happened last year, it's, Ken, the landscaper can't do this job, he can't get plants. And I'm like, send it to me. And sometimes we end up doing the job, you know, and it's, it's because we've had our own plants, we got our own stock, you know, so we do get late seasons requests that have to be done, and it, I'm going to other nurseries, too, you know, chasing plants all over to get that job done, and to meet the height requirement. A couple of years back, it was hard, but we got it done, you know, so. Yes, it can, it most definitely can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rubio, do you have any questions?
I don't at this time.
City Planner?
I don't so much have a question, as I just want to put it out there as a clarification for the commission and for the people in the audience. So, the reference to the thirty inch shrubs is actually a reduction from a thirty-six inch shrub. So, it's a smaller one than what's currently required in the code and has been required for the last three years. So, I don't want people to get the idea that we're now requiring thirty when we used to require twenty-four. It's actually, and these are for the hedges, for when you choose to put your parking spaces adjacent to the perimeter lot line along the street. So, that's when you require that hedge that used to be thirty-six inches, but we're reducing it to thirty.
Yeah, I misinterpreted that, that's my point, okay, I get it.
So, it will affect your orders, but it probably in a positive way instead of in a negative way, meaning you may get some thirty inches.
And in some of those though, isn't there like a percentage that has to be a evergreen?
There is, there are some mixes, so availability of mixes, it's like thirty or forty percent, you have to have a mix of either flowering, deciduous or evergreen, or something, some kind of a mix. I believe it's forty percent for when it's that perimeter parking lot that you have to do a mix.
That's what it says here.
Yeah, so, that now dictates it has to be an evergreen, but it doesn't say what kind. We, there's very few references that we prescribe what kind, and then there's the one proposed prohibition. But, I just wanted to make it clear that the heights are not increasing in this code. Some are decreasing, but not all. So, the future look at the code could look at the rest of them that haven't been touched, but there's no increase in height. There were a couple of sections when it came to screening your loading area and your mechanical equipment, that it did not have a height. And so, what I chose was like the parking lot hedge height, and use that for the mechanical equipment, because that's about appropriate, three feet tall or thirty inches tall. And then for the loading zone, put in an eight foot tree. Because to cover up, and that's probably not even going to screen the tractor trailer that's parked at a loading zone, but that's what the intent is to do, but an eight foot, it reduces.
I mean, my opinion is, you're never going to cover up all the eyesores, just to soften them up a little bit, you know, so, yeah.
So, that is in addition to call out an eight, but that's what I've been requiring people to do, the code just didn't have it the last time, so. Is it a change as far as putting it in the code? Yes, but is that what's been required all along? Yes. So, it's really not a net increase.
So.
So, yes, there's other things to look at, for sure.
So, I have, Commissioner Bushnell here, I have one more question. And that is, one of the, part of our discussion has always been is how fast will something grow? Different plants grow differently. They also grow differently under different environments, they grow different in different soils, and I think that's where my conversation last week came from. We were talking about soil depths, and that sometimes we're inadequate in what is put out there. So, my question is this, if the commission were to go to a standard that works, that is working in lower forty-eight, under the understanding that in lower forty-eight, the plants grow faster. They, you plant them, you need a thirty foot, a thirty inch height, you start with eighteen, you're there within a year, so it's no big deal. But up here, because we have a slower growing cycle, it takes longer.
Well, I mean.
Is there ways to, is there ways for us to compensate through the code? To make, to put things in place that will allow those plants to prosper and get to the height that we want without going to the higher, I mean, we're going to a higher plant because we want to accomplish something, because we don't get that much sun.
Well, the thing about it is, we get long sun, you know, it all has to do with biology, I mean, you know, long daylight, you know, for a short period of time versus, you know, like Indian plants, you know, low daylight hours, but for a longer period, you know, longer days.
Or pumpkins.
I mean, it's fertilization, water, it's clear, I mean, you trim for direction of growth, I mean, a lot of plants, the more they trim, the more they grow. So, it's plant type, species.
Okay, okay. Do any of the commissioners have any other questions? All right, here you go, thank you, sir.
Okay.
Couple of questions, so I'm Pam Fennell, I'm part of Ken's Garden Center. But what is the reasoning behind the requires mix and match of forty percent of one species? On the perimeter landscape shrub type?
I think I can speak, because we've talked to it many times, and this has been a question, okay, why are we doing this, why are we doing that? The idea is, is we don't want a uniform look. It needs, as I said earlier, we want to soft, we can't hide anything. We would need an opaque fence twenty-five feet high to do that. But, in order to have landscaping, you want to soften. So, if you have one type of plant, and something happens to it, a blight, a disease, a beech bark beetle, all of it dies. Whereas if you have forty percent mix, or you have a mix of different, three or four different types of plants, the likelihood of those, that landscaping to survive over time would work, and that's the reasoning for that to be in the code. Did I articulate that well?
Um, yes, the other thing that came up was the desire, because we have so many months where there are no leaves on the deciduous shrubs, was to have some evergreen, so that there was some green pop during those, the winter months.
That is one of the things that keeps coming up, is landscaping is only for four months, five months out of the year, but that's not quite the case.
So, and I agree with a lot of what's been said, I do think it's important that we realize really Alaska's growing season is June through August. So, we maybe have ninety days there. A lot of the plants that we bring in, I have already placed my orders for next year, I have to place those orders in September. And I don't care from a lot of my contractors until later, so it's a huge guessing game. Especially when we get plants that aren't from similar climates. I get those plants in absolutely as early as possible, I get them in, I try for the first week of May, because I need that plant to have as many days as possible to acclimate, store enough energy, even if it's for our zone, I need it to have a lot of time to acclimate to Alaska to make it through the winter time. So, it's not like, I can get more trucks up through the summer, but it's very difficult to get big trucks with big trees, the spruce that we bring in, an eight foot spruce, I mean, it's just, it's extremely expensive, and I have to get those in the first of May. And I still lose, I mean, I probably maybe lose five percent of what we bring in, which also increases the cost. And it's just because it's hard on those trees. They all have to come in temperature controlled, we had a quote just for freight on a forty foot truck the other day was sixteen thousand dollars, just on one semi. And so, when you bring in eight to ten semis a year, but those costs are important to realize that, because even if I bring in babies and plant them, because I have ninety days of growth in Alaska, it's going to take me years and years and years to get that to be an eight foot tree. So, I know you kind of are aware of that, but I had some costs I wanted to share on that. The other question that I had is, so, I think a huge part, and I've heard it mentioned a couple of times, is a maintenance, a maintenance program, if we can put in eighteen inch shrubs, but there is maintenance required, or good soil required, you're not just scraping back gravel and you're plopping a plant in there, it's going to live, it's going to live for forty-five days. It's not going to make it through the winter, but it's going to pass inspection. And then you have next year, and the landscape looks terrible, because so much of it is either died, or it's struggling, and so there has to be more, for a long-term good look, we need to do a better job when we're putting plants in the ground. And they're really, they're, I feel strongly that there needs to be maintenance for these plants. Even in a short season, we can get good growth if we feed and take care of the plants that we're putting in there. We are limited on variety, I'm a little concerned about the load screening area, the trees, minimum of eight foot and a continuous screen within three years. I immediately think arbor vida, arbor vida do great in the lower forty-eight, it's not a zone issue, it's the plant just doesn't do well up here. I would never recommend to anybody to do an arbor vida hedge in Alaska, but they do, we do them day and night, you know, in the lower forty-eight, and they seem to do fine. So, I'm a little concerned about what I'm going to bring in to meet this requirement. And probably our architects have some ideas on that, that maybe I'm just unaware of, but that's it, thank you for listening.
Any of the commission members have any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Commissioner Rubio?
No.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Castro with Architects Alaska, well, that's where I work, I should say. I actually want to talk about something slightly different. You know, there's been a lot of valid points made to the cost and the added labor, you know, for the soil when you're digging, you know, et cetera. But, and I believe this is something you guys are all looking at as well, and that's the reason why we're here. But when I have a client come into the office, and they say, hey, we want to do such and such a project, yes.
Commissioner Rubio, can you hear the testimony?
I can.
Okay, I'm a pretty loud guy.
Just want to make sure.
The first question we ask, obviously, is where you're looking at doing this. And when they say the city of Wasilla, we have to have that talk about the cost that it costs to build a building. And a lot of times, one of two things happens, either the project will fall apart, because they just can't afford it, or they look for property elsewhere. I've got a project currently going here that is about two and a half million dollars. And with installation, labor costs, cost of plant, et cetera, we're looking at two hundred fifty thousand dollars for landscaping alone. And I think it's a, just a little over an acre property, you know, and, and so, I think that not just these things, I think that the client relations, you know, because the people that this affects, like you said, Commissioner Bushnell, the people that this affects are the people that are, local people, that are trying to create their businesses in this area. And like you said, the large companies can afford to spend that money, but we're going to, we're driving people out because the cost of landscaping in this area is so high. And I realize that that's what we're looking at doing here today, is trying to drop those costs. But, even at the, you know, that Peter Briggs had mentioned, even at those, the price difference between Anchorage and here, let alone just going outside the city limits, I mean, those are such huge prices that I, speaking from the architectural side, when our clients come in and talk to us, those are huge deciding factors as to whether they build in this city or not. And so, that's really all I wanted to say, it's just from a client relation, because it ultimately, I have other projects that I have going on as well, where we thought we were going to proceed in a certain way, and then it comes back and there's additional costs because the terms have changed. And that, I mean, our clients get upset with us, and then we have issues with our clients. And that reflects on us, because we're their representative, right, we're the ones that are taking them through this process. Yet, it's completely out of our control, and so, like I said, I just wanted to speak to client relations and how this affects the community, that side of it, and the fact that I know for a fact, there's businesses that are not coming to town that are the mom and pop people, that just because they don't have two hundred fifty thousand dollars to put into plants. So, that's all I have to say.
Do any of the commission members have any questions?
Yeah, I have one, Commissioner Seidel, so you mentioned, Mr. Briggs had mentioned this too, so, so what about, what is in the code in Anchorage and Palmer, because Mr. Briggs had mentioned that, that makes it easier or less cost, more cost effective to landscape in those two cities?
So, as much as I hate to say it, Mr. Briggs is the one that is putting together the plant, the landscaping plans, and not me as much. So, I'm not sure exactly what the requirements specifically are, though I know he can speak to that if he wanted to bring him back up and ask him.
Fair enough, thank you. Any other questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Una Martin, landscape architect with the Boote Company. So, I just, I've been working on projects with the city of Wasilla for just two years. So, I started in February, well, not even, twenty twenty, February twenty twenty. And so, I was new to the code, and I was surprised when I began working on the code, having worked on Anchorage for a long time, to learn some of the more prescriptive nature of the code, which required different, like higher quantities of perennials, where in Anchorage, we're allowed to substitute perennials for shrubs, so that gives us flexibility to substitute in microclimates. I also, first of all, just want to say that I really appreciate like your commitment to the quality of life in Wasilla, and your vision for improving it as a whole through landscaping, I think that landscape architecture can very much be a tool in that way. And so, I wholeheartedly understand your motivation behind elevating the code. So, just to, and then, so to go back to what I was saying, there are some, there's, by prescriptive, I mean that as landscape architects, we're trained to look at the site and to consider things like climate and orientation, drainage, what was there before, nearby properties, in addition to the code, we, that's how we approach projects. So, when we're in a situation where we have to fit plant materials in to a site where it may not be appropriate, it sort of feels, well, it is, we are sentencing those plants to death in some cases, because we know that they will not be able to survive in the situations that we're being asked to install them, or having people like Ken install them. There's just, the level of maintenance is to be desired in many projects, and that's the case in Anchorage too, that's not like a situation that's specific to this town, or it's, maintenance is an afterthought in many cases. So, I think I've made, do you understand the prescriptive nature of what I mean, like, there's not a lot of flexibility, we have to tailor the plant materials to the project rather than design to the project. In which, then we enter into a design by review, if we want to make flexible changes, it, sometimes we need to change our design or to meet code, like, the design by review process can be a little bit of a hindrance, and I think that's what Mike was referring to. The client relations part. And so, just some specific things, like that come up are, like the gravel mulch, like, it's windy in Wasilla, and we want things to stay in place, and in some situations, it is the right solution. And by putting bark mulch in, we know it's going to blow away, and no one's going to take care of it, and those plants are going to dry out. And gravel, when done well, and there are situations where it is done very well, it helps keep the soil moisture in. That's just a specific example. And also, just soil in general, if you wanted to do, have soil requirements or testing requirements, that would be helpful. Though, as landscape architects, we do make note of that on the plan, it's just a matter of enforcement. Thank you, do you have any questions?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
No. Not at this time, thank you.
I do, this is Commissioner Bushnell. You mentioned type of plant as prescriptive, and I think this is something that You mentioned type of plant as prescriptive, and I think this is something that, I'll speak for myself, but I have, I have trouble understanding, is because I don't know which plants are going to work. And I plant certain plants in my house, some of them work, some of them don't, some of them I just kill. It just happens. I put too much fertilizer on them, and next thing I know, they're shriveled up into nothing. They were supposed to grow if I dumped a bucket of fertilizer on them, it doesn't work. So I know, in speaking with Tina, I know her goal is to give, is to give options, and and part of our discussions off the record have been that landscape artists are, are landscape architects, not ar- architects or artists, have the knowledge of the plants that will work here in Alaska. So our code, as, as far as I know, doesn't depict what type of plants.
That's true.
It depicts, it depicts, it depicts what, style, or lineage, or, or...
Growing type, category.
Thank you.
So like, evergreen trees or coniferous trees versus deciduous trees and shrubs versus perennials.
So then, is it, is it your testimony then that the options are just super limited? Or, what do you mean by that? Because we're not saying which ki- we're not saying what kind of plants to use.
That's true. No, you're not, but we do have a limited palette, and as the folks from, Ken alluded to, that we have, you know, certain plants that get into those certain, those sizes. And we believe the plants will grow if done and installed correctly. And, I mean, it's a joke I use, but, I mean, it's okay to plant green bananas, they'll turn yellow in a few years. And if you're only planting yellow bananas, you, it's kind of a premium, I guess. So you're, you're seeking a premium level of landscape materials, which are difficult. And to, we would usually specify some of those larger plant materials as specimen trees, like, you know, we'll choose to have a specimen tree that's very large, and then we might have different sizes. But that level of complexity is reserved for pretty high-end projects, where you just detail out the specific plant types to the size and caliber, even if they may be the same species. So that's a consideration. So no, we're not talking about specific plants as illustrated in the code. Specifically, I'm referring to plant type, like, we have to fit in nine hundred perennials into an area where we would never plant a perennial in the first place.
Okay, that's, that's, that's fair. A continuation on that same question, and I asked this earlier of other people, because it came up in a conversation. We're focused on plants, we're focused on landscaping. Should our focus be on something different? Should it be, be more on the maintenance? Should it be more on the enforcement? Should it be more on the soils? I know we, we have addressed, I know one of the things that Tina did address is we addressed the, the style of the island, so that trees, tree root systems could actually, I mean, we, we, the square footage area, we...
Made it a little larger.
Yeah, so that, because that was the concern, is these plants, the root systems could never survive inside of an interior island, inside of a, a landlocked sheet of asphalt.
Yes, and Anchorage, they don't consider a landscape island relevant unless it has a minimum width of eight feet. They don't count it, because it won't survive, nothing will survive in it.
Okay, thank you. So, back to that question, is there other things that we should focus on?
Oh, other things? I think simplifying the code, allowing, I, I really liked Peter's suggestion, or it was not Peter's suggestion, our collective decision or our collective support, where he presented about advising. And I don't think it's too late to do some of that. I don't have a full picture, since I'm still pretty new to the city of Wasilla's process of what some of the limitations that you face as a group. And I do really understand, like, that the city of Wasilla has so much potential, and that this landscape code is in service of that. And I, I would love to be part of that, too. I re, I hesitate to say enforcement, and I don't know how you do maintenance, as a, that is an onus on the business owners to provide that. But what you alluded to earlier with the creating a situation that is difficult and expensive to maintain, I mean, but, there's, it's not that we're looking for low maintenance, we're looking for appropriate levels of maintenance. And so in some situations, it's not appropriate to put in types of plant materials that require maintenance that is above and beyond what some of us would even do as homeowners. I don't know if I answered your question as which area to focus on.
You, you did answer it, and I, it brought up another question from the aspect of homeownership, because when it comes to homeownership, a lot of people plant perennials, so they don't have to maintain them, because they just come back year after year after year, for the most part, versus annuals, which you typically have to maintain, cultivate weed, et cetera. But the perennials have a tendency to be more natural to the environment and, and survive. We don't have any substitutes for annuals in our code, do we? I mean, we make exceptions based on site when we're doing retro and stuff like that, like we did for the car wash and et cetera, but we don't have as part of the code per se, correct?
They don't meet the code requirement.
Okay. Do, do any codes that you deal with ever have substitutes, as far as that, from an annual aspect for color?
Including annuals?
Yeah.
I have not come across the code that considers annuals. That being said, like, sometimes planting, raised planting beds may be part of the architectural of the, like, the larger architecture of the site, where maybe there'll be a medallion that will be maintained by the company that would be changed over year to year.
And not a standard of practice.
But you wouldn't call it out as a landscape architect, any specifics orders of annuals. You might allow that there will be an annual area.
That's fine, that just makes sure we won't run down that rabbit hole.
Well, no, it's totally doable, depending on, like, the type of client you're dealing with. If you're dealing with the headquarters and they want to have, like, their logo and annuals every year, you may want to make allowances for that. And take it in, those are those case-by-case spaces that, when there's an opportunity that arises, it's appropriate to suggest something that's higher maintenance. I wouldn't necessarily suggest that in...
Fair enough.
Some of the businesses that we get to work with.
Do any of the other commission members have any questions?
None at this time.
None at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Rubio?
None at this time.
Thank you.
Marie Hulse Corvis Design. I thought I would talk a little bit about some of the questions that came up. One of them was, one of the reasons for the advanced costs in our projects in Wasilla versus Anchorage. The larger plant sizes tend to really increase the cost of our projects here. They're harder to get, which means they either have to be a special order, or they have to be specially selected, and there's not a lot of availability, which means that sometimes we have to be really flexible about what we can actually put on a project, because a ten-foot-tall evergreen, or even an eight-foot-tall evergreen, could be very difficult to get in this area. So another issue is, because the local standard is eighteen inches for shrubs, the nurseries stock those eighteen-inch sizes, so when we have to go in and try to find twenty-four-inch shrubs, sometimes we don't have the availability and the flexibility of different plant types, which helps produce that, which helps reduce the monoculture that we have been getting in the city, because it's just not available. So having a plant size that we can use at eighteen inches gives us bigger flexibility for plant types, reduces the monoculture, and you get a lot of variability that, that we don't have the opportunity to get right now. It also reduces the cost, because those twenty-four-inch plants are going to be more expensive, and they're going to be harder to find, they may have to come in for the lower forty-eight. We can get available plants that are in our area, reduces the cost. And, and another thing is, when we're trying to design, especially with the perennials, they're very expensive to install. There are a lot of maintenance, there are a lot of labor to install. We've had a really hard time trying to find the quantities, especially from local suppliers, just because it's such a large amount, and we're kind of limited on who we can get those plants from. So I have actually seen people go to places like Lowe's and Home Depot, and buy those plants, which is not recommended, because a lot of those plants come from much warmer climates, so they're more likely to stress and die. So if we can get some plant materials that are standard for our area in size and quantities, we can definitely reduce the cost for our projects and make them look better, because we've already got the plants here, a lot of them are climatized to our area, and we have a really, a broader availability of what we can and cannot use. So that, I would definitely just wanted to kind of touch on that. I know we talked about that a little bit a few months back, but that was something I wanted to mention.
Thank you. Any commission members have any questions?
No questions at this time.
None at this time.
Commissioner Rubio?
No question.
Thank you very much. I'm getting frowns. Commissioners, real quick, would, you would mind if a, somebody came up and gave a second testimony from a different perspective?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, we've been flexible tonight, I think we can be flexible in this direction.
All right, Commissioner Rubio?
I'm fine with it.
She said no. Just kidding.
Thank you very much. There's something I would just like to reiterate, that what Mike Castro had said about business perspective on this is, the, the current code, when working with clients, often, they may not have done their due diligence, so when they run into the cost for this, it can really throw them to a loop. We're kind of the first line of defense for dealing with very angry clients, because of the process with the code. And it's not necessarily because of the code, but it's a surprise because it's so large, and we don't really have a way to tell a client, oh, this is, it's comparative to other locations. The other aspect which is difficult with the code is, any new code, which is relatively new, develops in part with interpretation, and over time, we haven't necessarily been able to predict where the code goes. And I think a good example is the, you know, our discussion for the, the parking perimeter hedges. For twelve or thirteen projects, when we perimetered these, we do twenty-four-inch plants. And it's only recently when it's changed to look at the code again to see the three-foot, and I see that as being a perfectly good code interpretation. But with the previous precedent to it, the code says twenty-four-inch minimum height for shrubs, and then with the perimeter hedge, it says three-foot height vegetative hedge. Anchorage used to have a similar code, where it said it will grow to a thirty-six-inch height hedge, so I've always interpreted that to say you're going to plant a plant and maintain it at three-foot height. So within code, that's one of those places where I can understand how it might go each way, but consistency of application is really important, because when we tell a client something and we set up our fees, when we tell them how much something will cost, and we explain the code to them, we need to be able to understand that the code to date that we understand is what we can apply going forward. And that is one of my worries with the new additions to the code, is that it adds extra potential for variability or predictability for a client, because it just, it makes me very uncomfortable as a professional when an interpretation might change, even if there's some logic to it, and you can look at it, I can see how you can do this, but precedent is really important for guiding our clients through a process. And I know that we talked about the predictability within our society's letter as well, but that's just one of my concerns with these additions to it.
Okay, thank you. Questions, commissioners?
None at this time.
No questions.
Commissioner Rubio?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I know he doesn't want to.
Yes, sir.
Kent Fennell here again. I, I just want to invite you guys to go down Seward Meridian. I think there's twenty-two professional buildings there outside the city of Wasilla, and I think we maintain twenty of them. There's probably five different plants we, we use on those. We use ballast rock for mulch, two or three different kind of trees, and it looks just as good as any, anything in Wasilla. I'm being boastful, but it's a simple application we're doing there, and I'd just invite you to go down and take a look, you know, down, down Wasilla. I mean, they even look good now. You know, there's no snow on the ground, you can see, you can see the cut, you can see the plants, you know, like, so, it's, it's simplified, you know, so that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to close the public testimony of this hearing, and I'm going to bring back Mrs. Crawford to go through the rest of it, item by item, or to talk about any things that came up.
I think I answered a lot of the comments as they happened, so I don't have a lot to say in response to it. I think a lot of them are valid comments, they're just not part of what we reviewed and looked at, and that would be what that stakeholder group or task force could look at and provide recommendations for what I'll call a phase two, look at this. I think a lot of, again, a lot of the things that were brought up are addressed. I mean, the perennial numbers are going down from sixteen to nine for a hundred square feet, so that's a reduction in cost right there, almost half. So that's, that's a pretty good reduction. The interior shrubs are going from twenty-four to eighteen, so that reduction's there. The trees interior are going from ten to eight, and for deciduous, and from ten to six for evergreen. Although the perimeter trees stayed at ten feet, there's no requirement to put an evergreen in the perimeter, so you could go with a mix of deciduous trees and have the ten feet and eliminate that cost in the, the installation of a large evergreen, or you could choose to, if you wanted to, you would just have the taller tree requirement. I think it may, I'd have to double-check, it may say eight, but it's, it's taller just along the perimeter, and we lowered the interior. Again, a lot of that was recognizing the costs and the, the accessibility of plants and things like that, and tried to factor in a lot of, maybe not even a lot of flexibility, some flexibility, like the bed widths, instead of being prescribed at ten, allowing them to vary in widths but not go smaller than six feet, and that's something that Anchorage has, and that's from them. Trying to give, like I said, and then the grouping and the clustering, instead of just having to have that continuous, you know, evenly distributed planting of perennials and shrubs, to give that flexibility for design, or at least some flexibility, but yet, and that's the thing that I'll say that I personally struggled with and didn't find any good examples of, is if you have three hundred feet of road frontage, or even a hundred feet of road frontage, how do you write a code that says you can't take all your required plantings for that hundred feet and put it in one corner, leave the rest vacant? And it's hard to prescribe that, so hence the, going with the idea of the grouping and no more than, you know, separation of fifteen foot on center, it still requires you to have every so many feet, you're going to have to have at least a grouping.
I have a question for you. And this, this came from a couple comments, just picking through, picking, I'm getting to pick and choose what I want to ask you a question about. But it was about the microclimates of a site, and yes, we have three hundred feet. What, what kind of mechanisms do we have within the code that allow for variant, or to be able to adapt, adapt to the site? Because, you know, not all of our building sites, not of all of our roadside sites may be, you know, here's three hundred of perfect feet that you could do something with. What, what do we have in there? Because it is about, I mean, it's about cost... Because it is about, I mean, it's about cost and being able to adapt to a personal, I mean, you're personalizing landscape to a site for beautification. So maybe those trees need to be in that corner depending on, I'm just, I'm arguing to argue, that's all. And so what do we have to be able to hear that argument?
So what, when this was adopted in '17, we specifically dealt with that. Because we recognized there are some unique situations, things that aren't typical, that need to be, you know, that the standard rules aren't going to apply to. Most of them, along the Parks Highway, they're all the same, but there's a few variations. And they need to have an option. And the only option our code had at that time was a standard variance, which the criteria for standard variance is very hard to, to meet. Because it can't be self-created, it can't be based on cost, it has to be something unique to your site. So we specifically wrote different criteria or findings for a landscape waiver. So that if you had a unique situation, you could come in front of the planning commission and submit that request and have a modified plan and get approval. The conditional use process also has that ability as you're coming through for projects over 10,000 square feet, to ask for modifications as part of that approval. So we've seen a few, not a lot, most of them have just met the requirements and haven't raised it as an issue. But there were a few that dealt with that. So the waiver is one way. The other is we do our best as a city, and the code has required it since at least '96, that you're not allowed to clear your site until you're ready to develop. That's multipurpose. One, it's more attractive to see a tree lot than it is a gravel lot. And that could be subjective, but typically, okay. So it's great to have a lot that's gravel and prepped and ready to go. The problem is we still have some 20 years later, they're prepped and ready to go and nobody's built on them and they're just gravelled. And then they turn to dirt and then they create dust problems. So, so from a visual standpoint. But if you leave those trees, you can preserve existing vegetation to provide that screening and buffering, which eliminates the need for you to plant trees, or shrubs, or anything. Same with the perimeter. The last few projects I've had come across my desk, and actually one that just came to the planning commission, I think, two months ago for the office building, they retained natural vegetation, so they did not have to plant that 10-foot perimeter bed. Part of it had to do with the way it was, but part of it's cost. I mean, so if you leave the vegetation on your site, then you have something to work with and preserve and offset it, and reduce those costs. Whereas if you clearcut it first, you have no intended purpose, you've got nothing left to work with. Those are the biggest ways, to be honest, that tonight's the first night I've heard about microclimates. And that hasn't been raised as an issue before. It's more been the numbers are too high, which makes the cost too high. Perennials are more expensive than shrubs. The 24 is way more expensive than the 18 and the 10 is for trees. You know, those are the things that I've heard. I haven't heard about the microclimate, so at this point, I wouldn't even know how to, I mean, other than coming through that landscape waiver process, if there is something and they can provide, you know, the packet to, to request that, they could come through with that waiver request.
Yeah, I guess I asked that question more from a have it on the record type question. Because perceptions are reality. And the perception right now outside of our city is that our landscaping requirements are onerous. And, and, and part of that, and I've said it before, and I'm going to pick on the building community for this, is out here in the, in the valley, we have self-starters. We have people, self-made people that became construction experts, that became home builders, because the valley has been under a home building boom for the last 20 years, as our population grew at 3% to 4% a year. It was not under a commercial construction boom by any sense of imagination. There was a few along the way, but we've seen a lot more in the last three to five years than, than I ever saw before. And I've been in real estate now for 17 years. And I grew up in this community. And so the big commercial building before that was Zimorillo, Bumpus, Newcombe. And some of it we like and some of it we hate. That being said, the, we want to make sure that we, as has been stated here, we want a beautiful community. We're proud of Wasilla. There was a comment that was made that I wanted to say something about, about high-end projects. And we consider every project in Wasilla a high-end project. Or we should. We can, because to that person, whoever's building, whoever's putting that money, it is a high-end project to them. But we want to be able to make sure that from a landscape standpoint, from a site, site plan development, that we are open for business. And with these builders that have been self-made in, in building construction, they didn't have to landscape anything. I mean, I was in new construction, home building in Eagle River, in Anchorage, and out here in the valley. We didn't landscape nothing. That was the owner's responsibility after we closed on the property. Then they could, they could take care of the landscaping. Well, a lot of those builders are now our commercial builders out here. And they've never had to do landscaping requirements. And, and I think that's why we're getting a lot of the pushback. That's, I think that's part of the reason that we're getting the pushback. And costs have gotten just extraordinarily expensive. So what do we get to pick on? We get to pick on the plants. Okay? Because they're not going to feed us from a, from a business standpoint. So we, I think all of us, especially sitting up here, understand that wholeheartedly. But we also understand that we want a beautiful community. So how can we offset that? But how can we also get the message out there that we'll be flexible to a certain, to a certain point, as far as what we want? And I think every professional in this, in this, you guys are all of the people that are testifying are professionals in this industry. And we never sacrifice that, that image of, of our community. So. Again, my opinion.
So the only other quick note that I will add is, I know Mr. Briggs mentioned it about the the way the code is currently written leaves room for interpretation. So even if you develop consistency with me as a city planner, I could leave tomorrow, you could get a new city planner, they may not interpret it the same way. So a lot of the clarification language, whether it achieved the goal or not, the intent was to make it clear in the code what the expectation was, when it was to be done, so that there's less need for interpretation. And typically, the codes don't give planners a lot of administrative flexibility. Most of it's reserved for the planning commission to grant. And I think this is pretty much consistent with that. So there's a lot of clarifying language. And again, it wasn't intended as a major rewrite, so I definitely am receptive and interested in the suggestions and changes, whether it's through a formal stakeholder group or whatever. And although the commission can certainly send the request to the council to establish a formal one, there's nothing to preclude the group from working on their own independently and then presenting a written recommendation to this commission. And then the commission can decide whether you want to take it up or not. That's always an option. Any member, whether you're a resident or not, can propose a change. And I think the commission's made it clear different times that you're, you recognize that this is probably not going to be the last change or last set of changes. And that it's a document that needs to be reviewed on a regular basis to make sure it's consistent with the goals of the community and the vision. And, you know, with costs and things like that. So it, I wouldn't want anyone to walk out thinking that there's never another opportunity, that you can't do it, that this is the only bite at that apple. So that would be my only thing to send out that way. And like I said, there's the option to do it unofficially, but if we do it officially, it goes through the council. We have to staff it minutes, agendas, advertise it.
Oh, for, for, for working groups?
Correct.
Really?
Yes. Yeah, so, like I said, nothing's to say that they can't choose at their own schedule and unofficially work on things to present to this commission anytime. Anyone can do that anytime.
So at this level, it's the same, same as when I worked with the state real estate commission, when we did work groups on teams, we brought everybody in for work sessions. And it was, it was held here. Okay. All right.
Pretty much.
Okay.
So I, we didn't like confirm 100%. I can do a quick skim through the code page by page. And if somebody has a question, I can address it that way instead of an actual line by line. Because I don't, a lot of it's just grouping of things together. And I can kind of call some things out as we go. Hopefully, the, the chart that you had in the package helped at least explain the changes some, so they weren't quite as scary.
Sure.
Maybe they got scarier after you saw the chart, I'm not sure.
No problem. I've, I've read through this several times, all 375 pages of it.
And all these 180-some lines, I've read through it multiple times.
So commissioners, please, if you have a question, ask it. Okay? All right.
What page are we on?
Oh, the first one is page 16. So if anybody wants to get out their strike-through and underline versions, start on page 16. I mean, that's a minor change. All it states is, right now, the code says a person, but not everything's a person. And it's just more for legal purposes to say an entity that's also responsible can, can get a fine. So the first, first few pages all have to do with, chapter one in the municipal code has to do with fines. And this is all dictated, a lot of this formatting is dictated by the superior court and how you have to do a ticket and how it's got to be included in their chart and those kind of things. So then you go to 17, start at line 71. That's the first part of the chart, and then if you flip the page, you'll see the rest. All of the fines are, again, you have to break them out by section. So when the code compliance officer writes a ticket, he writes a specific section of the code that you're in violation of, and then it has to have a fine. So for land use violations, our standard ticket is $300 minimum. There's short-term rentals have some, some tiering of costs. But everything else is just flat, $300 per instance or per day, depending on the situation. The only difference on this page is at the bottom, and I called it out last time, is the unpermitted clearing within the shoreline protection area. It's at 1,000, and you guys, that's new. It wasn't something that you talked about as to what you want that to be.
That's the commissioner's fine, that's the, that's my house.
At your house? That would affect you, so you have a vested interest. Don't violate the code, it won't bother you. No. So the dollar amount was put there as a placeholder, one, to catch your eye, and to recognize that once you damage these ecosystems, you can't reconstruct them easily. It's hard to, one, understand what was there before it was destroyed. Two, what's the impact to that ecosystem, especially if it's an andromalous lake or whatever. There's a lot of impacts and a lot of moving parts on this one. So again, it was 1,000.
Quick question.
There's usually not a repeat.
I have, I have a question for you.
Yeah, sure.
Because traditionally, fines for clearing trees were replacement of trees, cost of trees. There was a, I remember, right, N-Star, I think N-Star was going through and clearing trees and they took stuff outside, or maybe it was MEA. They took stuff outside of their allocated line, and they had to pay like $300 a tree for what they took or, and, and replace. So is this consistent with other jurisdictions as far as type of fine?
I think it's probably less.
Okay.
It could be more. Most of the time, it's probably less. Because a lot of municipalities do it by the tree. They will fine you by the tree if they really value the trees and that, that system. Now, I'm not personally married to the 1,000. Where I, 1,000 is the maximum that the attorney has told us that you can have as a fine. The problem is typically, we just had another one pop up that's doing clearing along the lake. You don't catch them till it's done. It, it's kind of a learning tool. If, if somebody gets hit with a $1,000 ticket, they're going to pass the word on to their neighbors along the lake. You better check with the city first, because I got tagged with $1,000, plus I got to put it back. I don't know, it's more of an attention getter, because they're not usually repeat offenders. They do it and they're done. So normally, your fines are, the first time offense would be 300, the second time would be 500, the third time would be 5, 1,000. But that's not typically how this works. So this one, again, I'm calling out to the commission. You maybe just want to go with the 300 for now and just not go there. That's certainly your discretion. But I just wanted you to understand why I put it there, and again, it was intended to catch your attention. Because we need to have something in there. Or, like I said, it's got to be in there. It's what dollar amount do you want there? So anyway, I guess I'll leave it as is for now unless you wanted to talk about it.
Because in order to change it, we have to change it in amendment while we're in.
You do. Yeah, so I would just circle it and then write your dollar amount and fold that page down and have it as a note.
I did.
Okay. So then going to page 18, you have all the new definitions. There are, most of them are highlighted in yellow because they came in after our August meeting. Some of them had to do with people's comments, some of it had to do with actually reviewing a clean copy and seeing how it worked and then recognizing their words that were still not defined. So it's a combination of why they've shown up. I think the only one that has anything, it really isn't any different. But again, it's making the expectation clear and that understanding was adding that definition of what a change of use is. It was previously buried up in the actual regulation with a bunch of examples, E.G., this or that. Seemed to make more sense to pull it out, make its own definition, and give a lot of examples of what we mean when we say you've done a change of use. So again, it's for clarity and for consistency of application in the code versus leaving it to some kind of, does this fit within the E.G.?
Commissioner Bushnell, I have one question on that. Is this consistent with the fire marshal's code of coding different types of businesses? Or will it be?
No, and it can't be, because they're based on, they have occupancy types and things that are different than ours. Ours are a district use chart, which does not correlate to their occupancy and use charts. Because theirs are tied more to occupancy and how you use it versus what the use is. Ours is, it's similar, but it's not.
Right, because theirs are more general. Because, so I have mercantile, I have assembly for restaurants, things like that, which, which gives more latitude.
Right. Yeah, so they're sort of similar, but yes, I've had that raised different times that they're, the fire marshal calls it a this. It's kind of like the borough also.
Because it's based on the, the international building code.
Right. Well, and the tax assessor for the borough actually tags things too as residential or commercial or something else. And it doesn't correlate with ours either necessarily.
Hmm, I wonder about that.
So it's pretty, ours is pretty much a standalone based on our district use chart. So it doesn't, it's not intended to have a direct tie. Let's see. Do you only want me to talk about what changed between August and, and October, or do you want me to go through all of the changes?
I think you should go through what, as much as the change, definitely the newer changes, but anything that should be brought up.
Okay.
Something, yes, please.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so the one at the bottom of 20, rolling to the top of 21, is just a cleanup. When the code was adopted in '17, there was an oversight in striking this section of the code dealing with landscaping for parking lots. We moved it and incorporated it into this chapter in 20, in 2017. But I neglected to strike it out of that section of the code. So this is just a cleanup. It's not been in use since '17, but it's been in there confusing the issue, so we're finally getting it out of there. At the bottom of page 21, starting on page, line, let's see. Line 155 and 156. This one's not new between the versions, but the reason that it's there is recently, we've had it called to question whether or not single-family and duplex are exempt from clearing the lot prior to getting a permit and clearing a shoreline, clearing within the shoreline protection area. Because it's, it's located in the landscape regulations. It's not under the section that says what the landscaping required is. There have been legal conversations that it should be cleaned up and clarified, but it does apply to those. They're not exempt from that. They're exempt from the requirement to plant a perimeter planting bed, a landscape island, 15% of the lot in vegetation. They're not exempt from clearing within the shoreline protection area, nor clearing their lot prior to getting a permit to build. So that's all that does. People think that's a new change. But I researched records and variances that the planning commission granted since the early 80s. And they always made a note, and these were single-family variances, that they had to re-vegetate where they had inadvertently cleared within the shoreline protection area. So clearly, it was intended to apply. This is just a clarification. On page 22, it's not really a, a major one again. It's just talking about when you have to bring a building into compliance, so I will skip that one. Through 23, those are all just either clarifications. A lot of things I went through is I changed, we had to make sure parcel and lot, and some of the verbiage, and tried to make them consistent. These are all just, like I said, clarifications. Page 24, lines 209 through 212. Again, it just talks about Again, it just talks about what, it clarifies what that 15% is, so that's new. The big change starts on 25, it's that shoreline protection area, and it rolls over through the end of page 26. What that does is, you can see on lines 243 through 246, that was the extent of the language that was in the code dealing with the shoreline protection area prior. So everything else is new. So the code just said native vegetation shall be preserved, and there shall be no clear cutting or placement of fertilizer in any area of a lot that's within the 75 feet of the mean high water mark of any body of water, including a lake stream, creek, or river, period. So the rest of this is just flushing out, what's the purpose of this? Why do we even have this section of the code? What kind of clearing you can have, some of the issues that we've had, and we've done it administratively, is we said you can do minimal clearing to give access to the lakes, so for pathways. You can do some thinning and clearing, so you can have some view sheds, but not that clear cutting to the ground level and grinding stumps and removing that root mat and that kind of stuff. So this is just clarifying the practice that has been in place. And then maintenance, talking about what you can, can and can't do. Intending to, if you have a healthy tree, you shouldn't prune it back so far that it's gonna die because you've removed too much of its, of its limbs and leaf systems and stuff, and if I'm incorrect, I'll be glad to have someone point it out to me, but I believe that the pruning is consistent with what other municipalities use as far as the maximum to remove from that canopy. And then it just reiterates, you know, adds it in, that the fertilizer, you can't do fertilizer, so it puts that under that maintenance section. It calls out specifically that there are other agencies that have review and authority over these areas, and just puts you on notice that you have to get in touch with them. Then it references the section of the code that talks about for properties that were already built prior to the adoption of the 75-foot setback, how you deal with nonconformity, whereas that wasn't there before. So it, it's really not a change. Looks like it's a lot of new words, but really, it's just identifying what's going on.
We went from four lines to 40?
Sometimes you have to for clarity, and like I said, it gets real, the.
Doesn't make it simplified, though.
Well, it does when it breaks it, yeah, well. The other left a lot of room for interpretations, and I've seen the interpretations go back and forth, and I don't think that's fair to a property owner, to, to be at the whim of whoever's sitting in the city planner seat, or even administration's seat, you know, as far as deciding. It should be equally applied to everyone, and they should all have the, the same, same requirements. So that's the intent. If I could say it in less words, I'm open to it.
I, I do have, well.
What, page?
Uh, 258 through, uh, 264. Removal of trees that are dead, a safety hazard to person, prob, um, are permitted, but replacement trees or shrubs must be planted with the same growing season no later than June 30th.
I got a problem with that.
I don't like it.
And that's what I said, I would just highlight it and then just.
I did, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Because I, I, I had five trees I lost the tops to this week, because, or last week because of the wind, for birch trees. Birch trees are just big weeds that grow and then they die. And so, you know, I, I don't want to be replacing my birch trees that, that die, because I, I'm gonna have to take three or four of them down this winter, because they're dangerous, and I'm not gonna plant a new tree in its place, I'm gonna cut it off. And then naturally, stuff will grow back around it, but it's just, that's, that's just, I, I think that's onerous to a homeowner to say, okay, your tree died, now you gotta plant others back.
It's only within that shoreline protection area.
I understand.
So what I would say is, if you want to go down that path, then there should be some language that says you can remove the tree, but you should leave the stump and the root systems that's there.
I think that's federal, I think that's federal. There's, there's, there's stuff in shoreline protection plans that, that, and it may not say that you have to, but they say they advise you to.
Right, but if it's only advisory, then it's not. So then you can lose that stabilization and that ability for the regrowth. Um, so I would say you probably want to edit that, something about to not grind that up and pull up that entire system, because that's a type of clear cutting now, and you're damaging the rest of the ground cover, so.
Or does it have to be replaced with the same type of tree?
Well, if I have, if I lose a tree, I gotta dig up the root system to put a new tree in its place.
But it doesn't tell you what size, you could start with a small one.
It says four and a half, it says the replacement trees must be a minimum of two inches, four and a half feet above the ground, replacement shrubs must be height of 24 inches.
Okay.
So therefore, I have to plant a tree, I gotta dig a hole, so I gotta bring in equipment. I've gotta pull a tree, I've gotta, which means I'm gonna kill every other tree around it, because birch trees are symbiotic with the other birch trees. You take one, you took five.
Well, that's true.
Yeah, and that's why, in new construction, I've learned this over 16 years, I watch these, they're like, oh, let's keep that strand of trees. I'm like, it's gonna fall on the house. Some of them you can leave, some of them you can't, and, and sites are specific for that. I mean, not, it's not, I can't just paint a brush with every site, but I, I've seen it. Smaller sites are more problematic than larger sites, of course.
And, yeah, like I said, if.
I lived on Cottonwood Lake for 35 years. I have pictures going back 30 years before I bought the place, and that shoreline has been cleared and regrown multiple times, and now it's, unless you knew, you couldn't even tell that that shoreline had been disturbed. And then you go two lots over, and there's grass all the way to the waterfront. But you quit mowing that grass for two or three years, or you have a gravel pit, you're gonna have trees and bushes growing back in it within, like, two years or less.
Yeah.
It may not be very tall, but you leave them go, you won't even tell there was a gravel lot there.
Yeah, well, I know that we've had some, that we had some minor clearing, and luckily, they hadn't removed the root mat or anything, they just cut the trees down, and they had mowed down the vegetation, but they didn't actually excavate it, and it regrew back, and just, I mean, it started coming back. So a lot of it has to do with that matting that you have. If you leave that in place, then it will regrow.
Because you're looking for, you're look, you're trying to combat shore erosion, et cetera. I, we, I think we all understand that.
Yeah, and habitat, so it's both, but. So, then the next big change, but again, it's not, in my opinion, it's not a negative change, but it's on page 30, starting on line 342 and rolling to the top of the next page. That's just given some additional alternatives to vegetative mulch. And then it has some specific, um, some that are specific just to industrially zoned lots. And so it includes things like evergreen ground cover, low lime perennial plants, ornamental, perennial ornamental grasses or other plants. Industrial ones can also use grass, um, as part of that, so they don't have to have any kind of mulch. They could just have the grass around the base of the tree and/or the shrub. So it gives some more options. Could there be even more options? Prob, I'm sure there can be, but at least it's a start, and it starts get, giving some additional things. And it's in response to some requests that I've received over the years. Said a whole lot of this, I'm not following my code, I'm just flipping through page by page, so it's kind of taking a little bit of time. I know 34 and 35 have a lot of red, and so does 36, but that's all just reorganizing the section so that instead of one paragraph, it calls out each of the individual requirements. So hopefully, that it reads a little better and that things don't get buried up in the middle of a paragraph. Same with the parking road terminations on 38 and 39. Not really any new language. The only new language that came in place for that has to do with the prohibition of the columnar aspen, and the language added about the trees that provide shade upon maturity. So I understand what the comment was about, we don't have a lot of tree types that provide shade, but there's shade, meaning when the sun's at a angle, which a lot of times of the year, the sun's not at a higher elevation, the fall and the spring, it's at an angle. It creates shade, you know, projecting as it comes across. The columnar aspen is very vertical, very narrow. They're great for when you have a tight site, or you're dealing next to a building, and you want to break up the facade or something like that. In a landscape island, they don't usually look right unless you do a cluster of them, which is now you're looking at three trees instead of one tree. The purpose and intent of the landscape island is to have a tree with a broader crown to create that appearance of a shade. Will it ever get a true shade tree like a live oak that you have in the south? No, it's not gonna be that kind of shade tree. Target's an example, they have some, I think they're weeping birch and some other varieties of trees that actually do create some shade. I find it interesting, growing up in Florida, you know, shady spots are at a premium, because it's hot year-round, especially in the south. But even here in the summertime, the spots that have a tree that create a little bit of shade are actually at a premium here. So they're still desired, they're still, and it just creates some more attractive views. So one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was, don't be vague about what you do or don't want, be specific and call out what you don't want. So that was the only tree that I could think of that grows up in that narrow fashion that really doesn't function as a tree, it just functions kind of a, an architectural plant type thing.
One of the, one of the comments that was made in tonight's meeting was that that type of tree is, and maybe I'm picking the wrong tree, but that type of tree was more, um, fared better?
It does, it withstands the winds.
It withstands the winds and doesn't get broken.
Anchorage has them, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. They have them in some of their medians on their divided highways or roads. I think near the airport, they have them there too. They also have them, I think, as a barrier or when, a, a visual barrier between the uses that are off the road and the highway. They serve a purpose, I just don't think they're a landscape island tree. That's not what the expectation or the intent of that is. That's the only reason they're prohibited there. They're allowed everywhere else.
Okay, they're allowed everywhere else.
Everywhere else, just not as a, not in the landscape island itself.
Okay.
So, yes, they definitely have value. The other changes on page 40, lines 561 through 564. This one is another thing that was, it always came up as an interpretation. Do I include the drive aisle entrance when I'm calculating the area of the parking lot? Do I include if there's a perimeter drive aisle wrapping around the actual parking lot? So this is just adding that you do, it makes it clear that those are exempt. That's the way that I applied it since it was written, and this just puts it in the code, so when someone's drawing a plan, they should know that you do not include the drive aisle that you come in, nor if there's a perimeter loop before you get into the actual interior. You only count that area of where the spaces are and the drive aisles between the spaces. So that reduces costs to a developer, because otherwise, you're, you're calculating your area of your parking lot, which require, you have to have 15% of that landscaping. So if you reduce the area, it reduces your costs. So it was for clarity and also cost reduction. Something else? I did note on page 42, the evergreen trees, if they're in, if they're the street trees in the perimeter on line 588 and 589, instead of being 10 feet, they're allowed to be eight. So I think I misspoke earlier when I said for the perimeter deciduous and evergreen would have to be 10. We act, this actually still lowers the evergreen from 10 to eight. It keeps the deciduous at 10, but if you want an evergreen in your perimeter landscaping bed, it would be eight feet.
So here's the que, here's my question. Why are we going higher than Anchorage? If Anchorage is at six and we're at eight, why are, why, what is that, where's that number coming from? What's the, what's?
Eight feet is what our code has had since.
I understand, but.
So I'm just saying, I can't tell you where the eight came at that time, but that was the norm, that was the expectation. I can tell you with evergreen trees, I have seen, again, it's that leader that they have off the top, that one last growth that comes up, that creates the top. Some of those have really tall ones, and they've been measuring to the top of that. So you have a, a spruce tree that's this tall, it's got a tall leader and he's six feet tall. This tree that this is big is gonna take 10 years before it actually becomes a true evergreen type, type tree and actually serve its purpose, or it's gonna take five years at a minimum.
Oh, the leader, the leader should only take two, two years, it mean, I'm.
No, I'm saying, but it's that, that, that width, or, I'm not using the right words, because I'm not a landscape architect, but the width of the tree to the height, that ratio.
I guess, let me rephrase my question. Eight has been in our code for a long time. We've heard testimony that other jurisdictions that are larger, that are in this area that have had landscaping, landscaping codes longer than we have are at six. Would you have terrible heartburn if we went to six?
I don't know why we would step backward from what the city's been requiring since 96. So you'd be lowering your cost.
It's a cost, it's a cost thing.
I understand it's a cost, but it's, it's that visual effect that you get with that. And I don't mean to be argumentative or to necessarily disagree with the comments, but I know that Anchorage has some broad landscaping, but then they have specific areas. So I'm sure the requirements in downtown are different than for other areas or for industrial areas. Eagle River is part of the Muni, but I bet it has its own system. So I'm not sure that it's fair to say that their, their requirement is six everywhere, and maybe it is, but it's not uncommon for communities to have different standards when they have a different vision. We have a lot, I mean, what people see when they come through the city is the part, I mean, they see what we are based on the Parks Highway. And again, when you're in a bigger city, you've got a lot of streets, a lot of ways to come through that town. You don't have that central entranceway. Most of our commercials along the Parks Highway, that's what they're gonna see. Six feet is okay, again, for interior landscaping, for things like that, but if you really want to have a substantive vegetative, um, display of plants along your perimeter, which is just what your first impression that you get, you have to go a little bit taller. And again, nothing requires you to have evergreens in your perimeter planting bed. You can go deciduous every day. You don't have to, but if you choose to, go with a larger one that actually looks like a tree and not a puppy shrub sitting there that might grow up into a tree someday. So it's, it's just going for that particular, that particular look. And part of it, I'm gonna say, the, the eight feet and the 10 feet was adopted because, again, when we went with this, the code that's in place now, the code required 30% of the lot to be retained in natural vegetation.
Understood.
Code was changed to 15, so there was a trade-off, and, and I recognize, you're getting this huge benefit. 15% of your foot, or your lot area is a, a large amount of space and money. I mean, the value is high for that. And so, yes, it was balanced with that. And the Commission at the time, which this Commission can certainly say different, said they wanted that more complete, formal landscaped appearance from the street. They wanted it to look mature, more mature, more nice, more attractive, to give that, that appearance of, wow, you're somewhere nice. And so that was their justification for giving up the requirement to have 30%. So can that change? Absolutely, every day of the week, but that's where it came from.
Okay. Commissioner Seals, you had a.
Well, I.
I interrupt you, and I apologize.
We have several experts in the room. I don't know, I, I, I wouldn't mind asking a question of, uh, an expert in the room, because, uh, what we're trying to do is simplify and reduce cost, but, uh, we're not simplifying and reducing cost. A six-foot tree, if they're measuring to that spindly thing, how long is that gonna take before the, how many, how many branches do you need to reach your six feet? I think I saw it, I've seen a little drawing in here, but. Perfect, thank you. I would love to have that question answered by the experts that are here tonight, giving us testimony. Oh, well, I guess we're past that. Well, that could.
I understand.
So I have to just interject a little bit, the purpose of the landscaping code and the look at it. The purpose of the landscaping code and the look at it, even with the changes that we proposed, isn't, the primary goal is not to reduce costs. It's to balance the vision of the community to have a more attractive appearance for commercial properties so that raises property values, it encourages economic development, and makes people want to be part of that community with what's a reasonable balance. There's always a cost involved with everything. I mean, you see it in building types. Some people put a lot of architectural design on their building, other people go basic. Budgets often demand that. And we haven't got into the business of doing architectural design too much yet, except for in downtown. Even that is still fairly basic and it has a lot of flexibility in it. So again, it's a, it's a policy decision as to how long you're willing to wait till you get that, that formal landscape look or that nice landscape look from the road. Are you willing to wait or, or not? I can tell you, I have seen some that were planted that were really small that measured. I think they must have been eight feet tall. I've seen some that were six feet tall. Again, it's like five years before they actually, I know the Native Center Clinic came in with really small ones and popped them throughout their landscape islands. And they were really small for a long time. I know they're about, what, eight years old, seven years old now? They're now, they're starting to look like a, a nice sized tree. So it's taken that long to go from what's basically was a six footer, because these were landscape trees, so they weren't required to be eight. I think they came in at five or six and it's taken them that long to come to that. So that's where I come up with it. It's about five to 10 years before you get it to actually look like a tree, like an evergreen tree versus a baby Christmas tree. So again, that's just a choice. It, you know, how long is the city willing to wait and, um, that's.
I know it's unusual, but may decide to support.
Once we go to this portion, I can't, we can't, we don't do testimony. But thank you.
The next big change, I would say, is on page 50, rolling over onto 51. Starts on line 686. And this is more geared toward a code compliance enforcement angle than an actual planting angle. And it has to deal with one that we had recently where they were required to retain some vegetation. And then a mistake occurred and more clearing was done than should have been done. Then it puts the onus, it creates, it creates a conflict between the property owner and the city trying to identify what was there before. Because again, they don't know for sure what was there before. I would question if they said they knew what was there before. What, did you inventory it because you knew you were going to take it down? Then you knew you were wrong in the first place. So most people who accidentally, and it happens, excavators go too deep. They take too much down. Nobody really knows what was actually there once it's gone, especially once they've dug up the root system and shifted the dirt. So it create, it's a very difficult situation. It's, it's very tense between staff and the property owner and trying to find an appropriate vegetation plan. So what this is now requiring is if you are preserving native vegetation and it's to meet a requirement of your approval, you must go out there and inventory it. So that when an error does occur, we don't require you to plant more than you took down or less than you took down. It's, it's a fair and equitable tool. So that's new, um, since like, since, since August. But again, it's just to make it clear and so that it's easy to do the enforcement without that back and forth of no, there wasn't, yes, there was, no, there wasn't, prove it. You end up in court and it costs the city a lot of money. So I think this will make it a lot clearer. Certainly you haven't had a lot of discussion about it, so you may have some things that you want to talk about with that. I think the rest of it, waivers. Yeah, the next big change is on page 53, starting on line 757. And then rolling over two lines to the next page. And it was actually brought up in the letter from the Landscape Architect Group, or the, not group, I know they're association, ASLA. Some sites don't require a landscape architect, some sites do. It's based on the size of your building right now. That's the way the code is. Right now, the city inspects all of the sites after the plantings go in. And I believe ASLA is absolutely on target when they say, we don't have the expertise or the skill to know, is this the right soil? Is it the right depth? We don't have the tools to measure it. We, you know, we just don't have the expertise on staff. We can count trees if it shows, you know, there's supposed to be three trees in this area. Are there three trees? Are they the right height? Check, 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 we can do that. So some of the conversations that have occurred was maybe we should have the landscape architect go out and inspect it, certify it, because they know what it should be, what the soils are supposed to be, and do that inspection and, kind of like a surveyor does an as-built survey after it's built. The difference is the landscape, well, neither one are doing the actual work, but they're, they're showing what's there after the fact. It doesn't make them responsible for it, but it does say that they've used their expertise to inspect it to know whether it meets those standards that were on the landscape plan. And then if it were prepared by someone other didn't require a landscape architect, the city would still go out and do the inspections.
I believe in their letter that they didn't want to be.
Yeah, that's exactly.
They didn't want to be any part of the inspection because it's not, they do a design and then it's for other people to implement.
So I didn't, again, it was processing this late, so I don't disagree that there's that need for that inspection and the look at the soil and that kind of stuff. And that deals, that rolls into the maintenance. I don't know how you get around this. Someone's going to have to inspect it and determine whether it meets it or not. And then when maintenance is, you know, is maintenance happening or not? So if it's, if it needs to be somebody who can understand it and has the expertise, if it's not the landscape architect who did the plan, then the city is going to need to hire a consultant. And then that cost is going to have to be turned back, you know, and charged to the developer.
Or train our inspectors accordingly.
You can, I can tell you, again, being land use and working with code enforcement, even in Florida, we had landscape architects on staff. They're the ones who went out and did it. They were full-time employees.
So they're, you had staff people that were qualified to do.
But that cost was passed on to the developer.
Correct.
I mean.
Higher, higher, higher permit fees, et cetera.
Right. And we don't have enough work to, to warrant a full-time person. So it'd be a contract hourly basis.
I did have, I had a question about that. I was going to ask it earlier and I didn't. How many landscape plans do we do annually? I mean, I, we only see, here at the commission, we only see one or two. And that's usually because of a hiccup, somebody didn't get something done in time, et cetera. But how many actually come through the city annually?
Good question, and I'm not sure I could, it varies from year to year. Some years we have more new buildings, some we have less. I know I have a total square footage for you, but that's not going to help you with how many we do a year. I mean, some years it could be one or two, other years it could be 10 or 12. Because the, there's usually, the only time we're dealing with landscape plans is for a new building. We have a lot of changeover in tenancy and occupancy and uses within an existing building, but as long as they don't violate that change of use and trigger compliance with landscaping, then it just stays the way it is. So there's no landscape plan involved. Then if it is something that triggers you coming into compliance, there's that relief in the code that says to the greatest extent feasible. So you may already have asphalt parking all the way from lot line to lot line and you only have a three-foot strip along the road. Well, we don't make you dig up the asphalt to go put in landscape islands, but wherever there's green space, you go build it out to the greatest extent feasible. So again, it's new construction and most of our new construction is larger stuff. So I mean, you see a lot of, you see the bulk of the big landscape plans because they're over 10,000 square feet. There's probably two or three more, maybe a year that we deal with that the commission doesn't see. So it's not that many in the scheme of things. A lot of it's reuse of existing buildings. So I put that in there, then when I saw the comment, I was like, hmm, well. I mean, we don't have to include it in there. We can leave, leave it to the city and deal with it later. It's just, I know I've had conversations with different landscape architects and they've said, well, they don't do the soil. I'm like, you can send me out and if it's fresh, I'm going to be able to see what topsoil is, but is it really the right kind of soil? Is the two-inch depth or whatever it is, is it compact? Is it supposed to be loose? To be honest, I've seen people install it in the hardpan and then come back and just put a layer, a couple inches of topsoil on top. I've seen them do that on a site and I know that doesn't, it's not going to grow, it's not going to live, but I don't have the expertise to go out there and cite, you know, or have the co-compliance officer cite them on that. We'd have to hire an expert and we just, we just haven't gone to that. We, we don't have the staff, the manpower to do that level. Which unfortunately means, you know, if the installer doesn't do it well, then the property owner is stuck carrying loss because they're going to lose their landscaping. And then the code requires maintenance in perpetuity. So as long as they have that business, they're supposed to keep the plants alive. And if they keep dying every year, every two years, they got to keep putting them back. So, you know, a lot of it's trying to look out for the property owner, but maybe it just has to be, it's on them. I don't know what the right answer is. Like I said, after having the issue raised, then I'm like, well, maybe you don't want it in there. And then I think the last one is under violation and penalty, starting on 56, running through 59. Again, I struck all the language. At first I had it to where it was all fitting words in between and try, and then I'm like, oh, this is too confusing, I can't even read it and follow it. So I struck all the existing language in this, renumbered it, reorganized, and called it out based on what's a violation, call that out specific, what evidence of a violation is, meaning visual observation of active clearing and a recent clearing. This helps when you take a code compliance ticket report. Your code says the fact that I visually saw you doing that is evidence and it's evidence. The judge goes, yep, well, they saw you doing it, they have a picture, we're done, you know. Otherwise you're there, well, were you there? Are you sure it was them? Was it not the neighbor? So this is there to, to make that easier when it goes to that point. And then penalties, again, calling them out specifically, renumbering them. The only one, number four is, you know, we broke out number four and number five. Number four is unpermitted clearing. It has nothing to do with the shoreline protection area. And then number five is that clearing within the shoreline protection area. And again, it's not specific as far as numbers and height and size, but it just says you got to put it back similar to what was there. That's the way that it's been applied in the past few, well, in the last 11 years that I've been here. And it appears to be all of the conditions of approval for variances from the previous planning commissions said similar language to that. So that's why I incorporated that. And then after that, you'll see all the other was stricken out because it was moved around. So those are all the major changes. Like I said, there's some verbiage changes. The goal was for clarity to deal with the industrial lots. And then take the low hanging fruit for ways to save some money, meaning with some smaller trees, some smaller shrubs, but not everything.
Commissioners, do you have any more questions?
None at this time.
Not at this time.
None at this time.
Then the next step is to entertain a motion on resolution number, serial number 21-14, to move it forward or make amendments. What would you, what would somebody care to do?
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, they would make a motion to approve it.
Correct.
And then after you make that motion second, then you can.
Okay. So I have to read the whole?
I don't think you have to read the whole thing. I would just say, motion.
Well, I was told you'd have to read the whole thing.
I don't think it's really required, but okay, sure.
It's been required for four years.
Okay. Commissioner Sejal, make a motion to approve Wassilla Planting Commission Resolution, serial number 21-14. A resolution of the Wassilla Planning Commission recommending that the city council amend Wassilla Municipal Code, Section 16 dot 04 dot 070. Definitions, to add definitions for ground cover, lawn perennial flower, native vegetation existing and landscape vegetation existing. Amend section 16 dot 24 dot 040. Parking to delete subsection 16 dot 24 dot 040. Parentheses D, parentheses four, parentheses alpha, dash 16 dot 24 dot 040. Parentheses delta, parentheses four, parentheses Charlie. Amend section 16 dot 33 dot 030. Exemptions to clarify exemption and non-conforming provisions. Amend section 16 dot 33 dot 060. Types of landscaping to add landscape provisions for industrially zoned lots and other minor revisions. Amend section 16 dot 33 dot 070. Inspection to require landscape architect inspection and certification for projects requiring use of a landscape architect. Amend section 16 dot 33 dot 090. Hardship waiver, landscape waiver, to rename the section landscape waiver and add language clarifying pre-application conference requirements and purpose. And amend section 1 dot 20 dot 030. Disposition of scheduled offenses, fine schedule, to add fines for landscape violations.
Is there a second?
Commissioner O'Neal, do you have a second?
Thank you. All right. This resolution is open for discussion. Would you like to start, Commissioner Sejal?
I guess the only comment I have is, um, what are the options going forward? I know we could, as far as having the committee, any kind of committee has to go through the city council.
Right. So, so right now we have, we have this resolution in front of us. We can, we have a piece, a written document. We can alter it as we see fit. There, there is a couple amendments that I would like to make to it, if you guys are in agreeance. We're not the determining factor on this. This is a recommendation. This will go to the city council and then they are going to rip it apart, guaranteed. And then they may approve it, depending on what our, what, what we say. And I think the fact that we say that we want a working group, they may push this right back at us and give us a working group immediately. But they also might then pass it and give us a working group immediately. Or they may pass it and not give us a working group. I, I don't know what they'll do, but that's kind of the options of, of what they, they can. But ultimately it'll be up to them if they see fit. And it'll go out, it'll have public testimony. And then they could potentially have a couple, I believe that they could have a couple of public hearings if they so desire.
They can if they want to.
If they so desire.
They typically only do one, but they have in the past.
Would you like to hear what my amendments would be and, and go from there? Does anybody else have any amendments that they want done? I can, I can, the, the two amendments for, for, actually, there's three amendments that I would like to make. One, I would like to make an amendment to remove the section, where did I just put it? I had it, I turned it over.
That's a daily one.
It's on page 12. Page of the city Wassilla page, the, the.
Oh, the, the reso itself? Oh, that's the one.
Of the, yeah.
58, removing the trees.
Yeah. And I just lost it.
Well, it's actually page 26 of your packet. It looks on pages at the bottom, in the center, page 26 to 27. It looks on pages at the bottom, in the center, page 26, page 27.
Yeah, 27, 26. There's... Here we go. All right. So, so my first...
What line number is that?
It is gonna be line 258. So, I'll, so I would like to make a motion to amend the current motion, to remove lines 258 through 264. Removal of trees that are dead, a safety hazard to persons, property, public, or deceased is permitted, but replacement trees or shrubs must be planted... Actually, hold on, scratch the motion, I'm gonna start over. Give me a second. The removal of trees and shrubs that are dead, a safety hazard to person, property, or public, or diseased, is permitted. Period. Striking, but replacement trees or shrubs must be planted with the same growing season, no later than June of the following year, if removal occurred outside the growing season. But leave, I don't know about leaving. Leaving replacement trees. Strike the word should.
Hmm. What line?
That would be line 262, so replacement trees, strike must, keep should, have a minimum diameter of two inches and four and a half feet above ground place, the ground level, and replacement shrubs should, instead of must, have a minimum height of 24 inches. My reasoning for that is not to require that they be replaced, but they can be replaced. I mean, because you're gonna have, dead trees have to be removed, but dead trees don't necessarily have to be replaced, especially in a shoreline setting, because you don't replace trees in a shoreline setting, they, you let other trees grow back up. So to say in here that they must be replaced, I think is, is not good language, but I don't wanna force a homeowner to replace trees that die in front of his house. That, that would be, so any wordsmithing with that, if you guys have any? So it would read, removal of trees and shrubs that are dead, a safety hazard to person, property, public, or deceased is permitted. Replacement trees should have a minimum diameter of two inches to four and a half feet above the ground level, and replacement shrubs should be a minimum of height of 24 inches at the time of planting. So the only thing that I've stricken from this is, striking the but replacement trees or shrubs must be planted within the same growing season, June 30th of the following year. So it doesn't put a requirement to replace the trees, but it does put an interpretation, if you were to replace the trees, on how you should replace them.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind?
Sure.
Based on the conversation that you shared with us, I would just recommend that you...
Strike it?
Strike the remainder of it.
Strike the whole thing, okay.
Instead of getting into what size tree?
Sure.
You can leave the removal of trees and shrubs that are dead is permitted, period. And then, I would just...
Strike the rest.
Strike the rest.
Okay. I was trying to, I was trying to compromise there a little bit.
Right, but you raised a valid point, as far as if you already have a root system and you're putting a large tree in which that size, even if, why would you recommend to put a large size that could potentially damage others? You can just leave it to nature to revegetate it.
Okay. So the, so the after the permitted, the rest of the paragraph two, line 264 would be stricken. Commissioner Rubio, do you follow?
I do.
Okay. Commissioner Sejo?
Yes.
Yes.
Would somebody second that motion to amend the main motion?
Well, I made the, can I, oh, because it's an amendment.
Amendment to the main motion.
Yeah, I second the amendment to the main motion to strike.
Okay.
Part of 259 through 264.
Any further discussion, any comments on this, commissioners? What's your thoughts? I mean, this is, this is something that I look at, because I live on a lake. So I understand, I've watched these trees for 15, 16 years, grow in front of my house, and the first time I moved in, I cut one of them down before it came back at the house. It, it became benches around my fire, my, my fire pit, till they rotted, and now they're, now they're gone, and it got burnt. But, you know, it's, trees, trees come and trees go along the shoreline, over time. Okay, with no further discussion, clerk, could I get a roll call vote on the amendment to the main motion?
Commissioner Sejo?
I concur.
Commissioner Rubio?
I concur.
Um, Commissioner Seals?
I concur.
Commissioner Bushnell?
I concur. All right, so the secondary motion to the amendment is approved. Okay, the second amendment that I wanted to make is on page 42 of 347, line 589.
What was that page again?
It's 42 of 347 in your packet. But 589, line 589. 28 of 46 of the city Wasilla municipal code. The paragraph is talking at 584, minimum of one, one street tree, so we're talking about street trees, and we're talking about heights. So evergreens must be a minimum of eight feet, and I would like to make a motion to amend that to six feet. To be consistent with what we've heard from testimony. Did you find it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, because there's no second, the motion fails. Okay, my third motion, well, does anybody have any other motions while I, amendments that they want to make to this, while I look for the third one?
I don't know.
Okay. back.
Okay, that's what I was just gonna ask.
It's 756 through, um...
Yeah, it's on page 53 of 347, I'm sorry. It starts on line 757, the part that you're talking about, stricken parts, starts above that.
756, for projects that do not require... Okay.
So if you want to leave it the way it is, you would just say to remove the proposed change and retain the existing language, or you can modify the existing language.
And the existing language is the red that's been struck?
Yes, on 754 through 757. Let me make, I'll double check that there's not any more to that, but I think that's it. Oh, that's it. So the stricken lines 754 through 757, that's what's in the code now. Everything after that's new.
So my, um, motion, amendment to the motion would be to reinstate lines 754 through 757. A landscape plan showing the actual landscaping installed on the site must be submitted to the planning department for final approval inspection. The inspection will determine whether it complies with all applicable landscaping requirements for the permit. And strike the following, um, lines from 757 through 764.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion from the commissioners on this?
None.
I, I will make a comment that the existing language, without going into wordsmithing, will need to be addressed in future, um, reiterations of this, but we need to remove the, the task of asking the architectural landscape, the landscape architect, um, to be doing our inspections. They, they don't have the authority, nor the, um, time to do it. Any other comments? All right. Ms. Clerk, would you please take a roll call vote on the amendment?
Commissioner Sejo?
I concur.
Commissioner Rubio?
I concur.
Commissioner Seals?
I concur.
Commissioner Bushnell?
I concur. The amendment, second amendment to the motion passes. All right, so we have a working document. Do, and the other commission members have any amendments that they wish to discuss Commissioner Seals?
Nothing specific, just majorly general.
Fair enough. Commissioner Sejo?
No further amendments.
Commissioner Rubio?
No, not at this time.
Okay. So before we vote, before I call for the question, any comments, questions, discussion?
I, my comment is, is I feel that even though some of these changes bring clarity, that this is still too onerous. To the...
To the end developer?
To the developer and to the property owners in the city.
I, in, based on the, the discussion that I've heard so far, um, you know, we've, we've asked for discussion since March, we've asked for people to come talk to us, we've had people talk to us about the perennials, and they, they said, you know, the perennials are the cost. We've heard comments from the architects that people boycott the city of Wasilla because of cost. Um, but the one thing is, if we don't move something forward at this point in time, then we get closer to next year's building season, and we push people out of the city where there are some cost savings here, but ultimately, it will be for the city council to ultimately decide whether this will work. But what we need is that next step of a working group of people that really understand this topic, to work with our planning department, to put something together that we all agree on. Because right now, um, I don't think any of us up here are landscapers, and I know that we're a little bit overwhelmed by some of the complexities of this issue. And, and I'll admit that right off the bat. I mean, yes, I've worked in the industry for a long time, many of us have, and we, we understand it, but it's not what we do. So to become experts in six months is really difficult. And we need, and we need that cost, we need a cost presentation of a, of a simple site plan, different sizes of site plans, to say, this is what it costs in a different community, this is what it costs here. Sales 101. And, and the city of Wasilla is open for business, they are, the big thing here is, we want retail, we want commercial development, so therefore, we must make it easy, but at the same time, we can't give it away. It's our home. So, I, in my opinion, I will vote for moving this forward to the city council. I am sure they will have just, uh, just a riveting discussion on this, and they may send it right back to us with some instruction on things that they want to see changed. They may not, they may, like I said earlier, they may go forward. But I don't think that if we wait another 30 days, that we're helping the situation. And, and I know that, um, the group sent us a letter from the architect, um, the landscape architect sent us, asking us not to approve it at this point in time, but I think we've made a couple changes in here that will help. I think we're moving in the right direction. Is it, it's a Band-Aid at the moment, but it addresses many of the things that we need to do, and we've waited six months to get this far. By pushing this, this forward to now, it's, we're not, we're not doing irrevocable damage, but I think if we don't do something, then we could potentially derail a couple projects for next season. And we don't need to do that. That's my opinion.
Um, I have a hard time passing this, to change it in the future. There's stuff in here that, over the last week, I had, it, it's popping out new to me. We've had some of the best testimony tonight, so far, that we've had in all our time working this. I've asked many people who, um, are of the opinion that, um, the landscaping regulations in Wasilla are too onerous and too complex to come and speak, but I can't, I can't make them come through the door. But I've listened to all their comments, I've listened carefully to all the comments, and I just have, well, we can fix this later. I just have problems with the complexity and the, and the onerosity of this, but just, so, I'm...
The one thing that I will say is, um, to, to, to that, not, not to talk you into a decision or anything like that, but Title 21 in Anchorage is a lot more complex. It, it, it may be simple in some of the things as far as landscaping and things like that, but having worked in that market, it is, you, you have to know what you're looking at and where you're looking at, and it comes, it comes down to the experts, which we're not the experts in, in this particular field, and we're becoming somewhat of a, um, expert in it right now. Everything can be fixed from meeting to meeting to meeting as we go. Our code is a, is a working, breathing document. It, it will change from session to session. If I get replaced by the mayor next week, there'll be somebody else up here, and, and they may have a slightly different opinion, and maybe this starts going in a different direction. But that's, that's what the planning commissions are all. But I don't, I don't feel that we should derail the, the changes that we've made, that are in. But I don't, I don't feel that we should derail the, the changes that we've made, that are in here for naught. That's, that's my opinion, and, and each of us is entitled to our own.
Commissioner Sejo?
Yeah, I kind of see it both ways, um, but I don't want to keep kicking this can down the road. I don't know, maybe going forward, we could ask the city council to adopt having a, um, planning group to kind of give us some recommendations for changes in the future. Because like you said, it is, it's not, you know, set in stone. It's a living, breathing document that changes over time. So, um, I just think after we've done all of this, you know, a lot of work has been put into it. Um, it's not perfect, you know, I'm not crazy about it. And like you said, it's, I mean, it's hard reading, you know, especially when you're not, you know, somebody like me, I don't know anything about this, you know? I just cut my lawn, that's about it. So, um, yeah, I would, you know, I'm kind of a little on the fence, but I'm leaning toward just kind of moving this forward. And, uh, and, you know, Ms. Crawford has mentioned earlier that most of the permits coming in now for larger, larger buildings where they obviously have the money and capital to do the landscaping correctly. So it's not, I mean, I don't know how many people would be chasing away, you know, with the new requirement.
Commissioner Rubio, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I feel like I agree with him and, um, but it does make its way back to the city council so that they can actually come up with that board. And to, like I said, I think, I agree with you two, they're going to tear it up. We have worked hard on it, I agree with everyone on that part. But I think a fresh set of eyes on that and another team to keep evaluating that. Because, you know, like the whole issue with the eight foot versus the six foot. I mean, we want to change things in there, we're going to have to change things.
One last comment from me. In the, in the testimony, um, we talked about, they talked about the increased cost of developing here in the Wasilla based on certain site plans, and he talked about perimeter landscaping. One of the comments that was made is actually this, this new code, the changes that we've made, actually we do reduce the cost by fifteen to twenty percent. Is it, is it what any of us want? I think we, we want everybody to, you know, come into the city and say, this is the greatest place in the world to develop and, and this is really easy. But it is about money and it does cost a lot of money. But a fifteen to twenty percent reduction is a good, a good starting point. It's not, it's not a waste.
I have a comment on that. I can understand that there's a fifteen to twenty percent cost reduction and that major corporations are going to swallow the, the bill whether there's a fifteen or twenty percent. Are we going far enough for our local mom and pops?
I don't think so. But I don't think until we can get a, a, a working group and, and a true cost of each of these different things, where, where do we start? What, what part of, what part of, of the landscaping plans and things like that do we come through? The one thing that I would like to compliment, um, Mrs. Crawford on is, is she's been doing this for twenty-something years. And she does understand planning commissions and, and what their function are as one of the community. And, and I will say this, there's probably not a planning commission in the country that is liked. It's kind of like a property manager. They don't, you don't like them because they force you to do what you don't want to do. And at this point in time, we have to come up with some, a working plan. We've been tasked with coming up with a working plan that many people will not like because it's going to cost them money, that they don't seem to think they fit. And as we know, in just watch any argument today, nobody in America wants to be told what they should do. They want to make that decision on their own. And unfortunately, within the city, we can't allow that to happen. Just can't let it happen.
What, what assurance would we have moving this forward? That we're going to get a review committee? Or?
You don't.
Bingo.
It's, I can't, I can't make that promise. But we can make a resolution. We can ask for a resolution requesting that from the city, which then they would have to respond to.
Can that be inside this, or is that an outside?
It'll be a separate resolution.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, if I can just...
Sure.
For Commissioner Seals, direct this to him. The good thing, as far as the timing with the holidays, the resolution requesting the working group can be on the December agenda if we have that December meeting, which we should, because the CIP was scheduled to be on it. So it can be there. This is not going to the city council until January anyway, so it could be kept, caught up and sent together. It will, it can't be done tonight because it wasn't advertised, the resolution. But by the time it gets to the city council, it, you can have it adopted and ready to go by the time it has to be the city council.
And this won't, these changes won't come into effect until after the city account, council has approved them or modified them?
Correct, this is just a recommendation going to the city council.
Okay, thank you.
If there's no additional comments, I will ask the clerk to do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sejo?
I concur.
Commissioner Rubio?
I concur.
Commissioner Seals?
I concur.
Commissioner Bushnell?
I concur.
There we go. There we go. David, turn your face. The Wasilla Planning Commission Resolution Serial Number twenty-one dash one four. Resolution of the Wasilla Planning Commission recommending the city Was, the city council amend Wasilla Municipal Code, Section sixteen dot zero four dot zero seven zero definitions to add definitions for ground cover, lawn, perennial flower, native vegetation existing and landscape vegetation existing. Amend Section sixteen dot two four dot zero four zero parking to delete subsection sixteen point two four dot zero four zero. Subsection D four and A through sixteen two four dot zero four zero, D four C. Amend Section sixteen point three three dot zero three zero exemptions to clarify exemptions not conforming provisions and amend Section sixteen point three three point zero six zero types of landscaping and to add landscape provisions for industrial zone lots and other minor revisions. Amend Section sixteen point three three point zero seven zero. Inspection and to require, to require landscape architect inspection and certification for projects requiring use of landscape architect. Amend Section sixteen point three three dot zero nine zero hardship waiver, landscape waiver to rename the section landscape waiver and add language clarifying pre-application conference requirements and amendments. And amend Section one point two zero dot zero three zero disposition of scheduled defenses, fines scheduled to add fines for landscaping violations is approved.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, everybody. For that. At this point in time, we'll go to the following items under communication in the packet. Are there any comments on those? Because one of them is the...
Calendar for next year.
Calendar for next year. This is when I get to plan my vacation days. February eighth, March eighth, April fifth.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thanks. Please take a look at these, make sure you're going to be available.
I see.
Oh, yeah, I'm good for January tenth, twenty twenty-three. All the other ones are in question.
There you go. Uh, I will not be here for the January eleventh meeting. Well, actually, I take that back. I might be back. I'm going to be in Denver watching the Chiefs play, Denver Chiefs.
Be here again, right?
Might be.
If we elect the officers.
Yeah, can't, can't elect me if I'm not there.
Yes, you can.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, we can. And I think I've turned out, don't I?
Not this year.
Twenty-two? I'm I, I'm I.
It's December, we already sent notifications to people.
No, there's only one person that termed out and they're staying on the commission.
Correct.
And it wasn't you.
So you're at least here through next year.
Good try.
Yeah, so, yeah, going to, going to see the Chiefs and the, and the Broncos and then the Avalanche and the Winnipeg, uh, or not the Winnipeg, the, the Maple Leafs the night before. All right. Uh, permit log, enforcement log, Matt's super planning commission agenda. Is there any audience comments? No, they bailed. Come on. Oh, there it is. So staff comments?
I just appreciate all the work that the commissions had and any suggestions you have. My goal is to give you the tools that you want and I believe I let down Commissioner Bushnell with his price comparison. I started it and got distracted by other things. I'm going to definitely tag Mr. Briggs. He volunteered to do it, so I'm going to follow up with him and get that back to you guys. So you'll at least have that. And then hopefully he can do that breakdown on the interior landscaping to give you a more understanding of the savings. Because I believe that's where the biggest cost savings is going to occur out of this particular ordinance. Appreciate the, the, the feedback and the information about, you know, definitely there are other changes that need to occur. I mean, that's a given. But we got off topic, we, we dabbled a little bit further and tried to do some fixes and, and I think they're good fixes. They're, they're not perfect fixes, but I, but I hope all the commissioners walk out of here understanding that there was really nothing in here that increased costs. They either stayed the same or went down. I don't know how anyone could get the feeling that it was a total waste of time because even a fifteen percent cost savings is significant. I mean, that's money they can use for something else. But definitely excited that we have the group actually engaged now and ready to give feedback and excited about delving into it. Looking forward to seeing their, their comments. And I will try and reach out to Peter again, Mr. Briggs. And, and touch base with that. I see no reason for the city council not to set up a stakeholder group. Commissioner Bushnell's right, you know, there's no guarantee. But they've done things in the past, we had it for the Sign Code, we had it for the downtown overlay. If there's an interest, they've, they've been receptive to that and supportive of it. And I think they recognize the same things that, that you struggled with going through this conversation of, I don't have the expertise. I'd like to have some input from people who do this on a daily basis. And then you balance that against consistency with your comp plan and your vision. So, um, they'll be a great asset if they actually engage and, and give you guys some definitive information and the whys and the supporting documentation. So I think that's good. And, um, yeah, it'll be interesting to see how it goes at the city council level because we have two new council members back on, or one repeat, but new. As far as have been on in a year or so. So it'll be interesting to see. They're usually fairly supportive of what the commission sends forward unless they just think it's out of character. And I can't, again, I can't see that we adopted anything. You removed some of the things, a couple of the things that were a little more onerous and put a cost on. So I don't see why that they would be that concerned about it, especially if they know there's a stakeholder group coming in. Because then it's just kind of, as Commissioner Bushnell said, it's a Band-Aid, helps reduce some costs in the interim, which will help the people that'll be developing next year or even possibly planting. Ones that were approved the previous years could go under the new requirements and submit a revised landscape plan, which could net them some savings. So, I mean, it, it's a small win, but it's still a win. So I hope you see it that way. And, and I appreciate all the hard work and the feedback and all the vision readings and all that.
Chair, I have just a comment. One of the things that this administration is trying to accomplish is when you're open for business, you have to have policies that attract and you have to have policies that are easy to understand. And they already know the cost of land is less out here. And that's what's attracting them first. And then the secondary thing is they're bringing what they understand as being an easy, simple process. Um, and they're not able to interpret ours. So I would just encourage the council and the commission to keep that as our target. If we're going to be open for business, we have to have policies that attract and we have to be able to communicate them to a kindergartner. And you can still have a thick book, but you have to have big print. And, uh, and I think that that is, that is very important. Um, if you would say an architect, landscaper in Anchorage or a landscape, what is it, architect, landscape, landscape architect or whatever? You say that in Anchorage, they know what that is. You say that out in the valley, they just know that you are going to charge them a whole lot of money. And they should not be writing policies that attract our market. We should.
All right. Commission members?
I would love to see this in under four hundred lines, with big drawings and cartoons and it's going to cost you this much for this many trees. Keep it simple, stupid is a great way to go. This is very complex. I think it's way too complex for what we need for the future. But that's just my opinion.
I would agree with your opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I just think we're going in a, in the right direction. I don't know, maybe, and I don't know if Mrs. Crawford, if they looked at it, maybe look, because there are a lot of comments made about Anchorage and Palmer being, you know, a lot simpler or easier to follow. So I don't know, maybe if, you know, you hadn't looked at that, maybe that's something we could consider in the future.
I do and I will.
Okay.
Myself personally, uh, very uncomfortable that I helped this go through tonight.
Commissioners, one thing to understand about up here is you don't have to agree. I will, I will sit here and twist your arm with every argument I have to get you to vote the way I want you to vote. But you got to vote the way you want to vote. And when we leave here, I'll still buy you a beer. Yeah, but the one thing, one thing I, I would like you guys to do is you should go read the Anchorage code. And if you go read the Anchorage code, then come back and tell me whether Wasilla code is more complicated or not. Because it's not. The Wasilla, the Anchorage code is a behemoth.
You know what?
It, it really is. Now, the landscaping portion of it might be simple, but the rest of it, not so much.
Well, what I'm, what I've been dealing with here, except for the stuff coming in, is this landscape code. And I'm pretty sure Anchorage is way easier than this is. I haven't proved it to myself yet, but I'm going to. Because all the comments I've heard out there is this is too much.
One of the...
And I want a beautiful city too, because I live here.
I, I think there's some work that we can do on the cost and things like that. But some of the things that we don't do on landscaping here is we're not dealing with a lot of the drainage and stuff like that that they have to deal with in Anchorage. We don't, we don't necessarily have to deal with that. So in, in some ways, our code is simpler. It's just, we need to make it, we just need to make it so that everybody understands that.
Whatever is passed, I think it would be a good investment to clearly communicate to the audience in a way that they are understanding and not taking.
And that was one of the things that Tina and I talked about. And that was one of the things that Tina and I talked about earlier today. And, and one of the things that I had asked her, and I didn't quite articulate what I was looking for and she articulated back to me, we got on a good understanding of what it is. I was looking for a site plan development as part of the code. But she explained to me that that's typically not, you don't, I mean, we've got a couple of pictures in here and I hate those pictures because they're, they're not, they don't, they're not here. And so if you had a couple, if we had a couple of examples and Mrs. Crawford explained to me that that's usually a tool that they have for when they work with, with the public and that's, and that would be something that then we need to go to the architects and make sure that they understand so they have those, that, those tools that, you know. I've sold a lot of pieces of property over the years and I can sit there and talk to somebody about something and explain it to them and they think it's a great value. Somebody else could explain it to them and they think it's a total ripoff. So it is the, it is the presentation. And perception is reality regardless of the truth.
I did research this afternoon and found a couple. They're still sketchy on the drawings. I think in talking to someone else about this, a good example is the building code. It doesn't have drawings. So really you have experts who understand, who are licensed professionals. I mean, I'm sure your real estate documents don't have drawings in them either. But some of it just requires an expertise and I spend whatever time it takes with a mom and pop to help them do their own landscape plan or to guide them to maybe your surveyor can do something because it's fairly basic because you're dealing with a small lot. I'll spend the time and help them, you know, manually draw or give them, you know, an example, sketch it out with them so that they have something to go from. We don't just leave them hanging. And then the ones that are required to have a landscape architect, they really understand. But I have pulled a couple and I'm going to work toward what you were suggesting as far as a more of a how to.
And it sounds like we have a couple of volunteers.
Yeah.
Well, without further ado, I'm going to call the commission adjourned at 9:18.